Call this side meeting of the morning, for us regional school committee to order. Please stand up and pledge.
Pledge. Pledge your allegiance to the United States of America, the two republics of which stands one nation under God, in this world where there is justice for all.
All right, our first item, we're going to go straight into an executive session, so please have a motion to enter an executive session to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health rather than professional competence of the individual, or to discuss the discipline or dismissal law, or complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual.
So on.
Second.
All right, Lisa?
Second.
Yes.
Roll call.
Roll call over. Ten and thirty to the executive session.
Hi.
Lori.
Hi.
Megan.
Hi.
Jess.
Hi.
That.
Hi.
All right, we will now enter the executive session. We will return at about 5:30. All right, Carolyn. All right, we're back in open session for our meeting. You just finished our executive session. Before we get into the superintendent search presentation, just two pieces of news. So this is our last scheduled meeting before December 43rd, which is when the former superintendent Carol Pessell retires. So there you go. And also congratulations to the football team for winning their state Super Bowl this year, right? So good stuff. All right. I have something else I want to say about that. Absolutely. But can't let that go in the middle of the day. So let's bring up our superintendent search presentation. Lori, do you want to introduce us?
Yes, we have two different people here. We have Ms. Tracy Novak is going to present first from the MASC, and then we have Mr. David, is it Derusi, is that how I say it?
Yes.
And Mrs. Oh, my goodness. Ms. Judy Palucci. Hey. They're here from Nezdeq. And both sets of people are going to explain to us how they would run a superintendent search. Because this time, we're going to do a full search. And we'll see what they have to say.
And we apologize, Tracy Novak, for the sparring your name on the agenda.
(laughing). So good evening, please be with you. Thank you for inviting me here. My name is Tracy Novak. I managed to speak to a number of you, and that's one of the reasons why. I'm a field director for some of Massachusetts, for the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. And that actually brings me to my first point regarding the superintendent search. I mean, obviously, any decision that you need to make really is a question of why would you choose one organization over another organization? And the thing that I think is actually most important in terms of you making the decision and the determination as to what you want to do is that MASC is already your organization. We are why, you are why we exist. MASC is a member organized, member driven organization. We were originally formed by members who felt that there was a need for a statewide organization of school committees to provide them with professional development, to keep them appraised of legal and policy changes that were happening at federal and national level. And our services thus have just simply evolved in terms of what school committees actually need from us. And regardless of what choices you make, as again, a number of you already know, MASC will remain your organization. You have a field director, I'm your field director for Central Massachusetts, four of us across the state. A significant part of our job is actually responding to members' questions, emails, phone calls. On a daily basis, there's a significant part of my time that's actually simply devoted to that. And the professional development that we provide to school committees across the state. The emails that provide information, policy updates, and so forth will continue to come. And so that support, I think, is something that's actually very important. We, of course, are all at the association because we are the Association of School Committees, our focus is on the school committee and the needs of the school committee. All of the field directors are either current or past school committee members. As some of you may be aware, a former member of the foster school committee, my colleagues either are currently serving or have recently been on school committees. And that is the perspective that we bring to the superintendent search, which I think actually matters quite a bit. We also bring the perspective of someone who is not sort of coming to your district without any background in your district, right? I live in Worcester, I'm from Central Massachusetts, I actually grew up in Sterling. Well, this is, I think, the first time I've been in this building. It's not the first time that I've been in your school district by any means. And I think that that actually matters quite a lot, because part of what we see superintendent searches as doing is really, first of all, being an opportunity for a school district to really strengthen its health. It's a chance for you to look at what you're doing well, to look at what you could be building on, and to see the search as a process through which you actually expand upon that. One of the things that I think of superintendent searches as doing is actually being an opportunity for us to also strengthen our relationship with you. And so when I say that we staff a search, school committees, of course, are the ones who direct the search, that's usually me. And that means that I'm the one who's actually doing the, conducting the survey. I try to make sure that I get into every faculty meeting, I'm actually in front of your staff, with your central administration, conduct the public information centers myself. I think that matters quite a bit in terms of my then being able to bring back good information to you, work directly with the screening committee. It will be me unless there is some sort of unavoidable conflict, in which case it will be one of my colleagues who also is a field director. And similarly, therefore, the interviews, working with you in terms of making sure your questions are good, doing a solid job of making sure that you have a good ability to get insight into the candidates that you're making, making sure that you have an opportunity to visit their district, they have an opportunity to visit your district. And then, of course, regardless, again, of what you choose in terms of your search process, MASC doesn't go away. So we are always available for completing a search. For us, doesn't actually end until you have a signed contract. But of course, we then also encourage you to do things like have a retreat with your new superintendent, make sure that you are on the same page in terms of setting goals for the superintendent and goals for yourselves, making sure that you've considered and come together around operating protocols, that you're on the same page in terms of things like the open meeting law. These new superintendents are a really good chance for strong professional development of the governance team. And we, again, that's part of what you get from us already, because you're members of the association, we think of that being as a very important part of the process. I've kind of walked you through this already, but this is really more or less what a search looks like for us. We do make sure that we sign a contract, what you're looking for is entirely included for the cost of the contract. The only thing that would be an exception is if for some reason you decided to advertise in the Boston Globe, and frankly, we can tell you not to do that because it's kind of a waste of money. So we make sure that we are available for staffing to make sure that you have everything that you need in every step of the way. And one of the things that I emphasize certainly to the school committee, but then also to the search committee when I'm working with them, but then also I share my contact information with the larger district, because the one thing that I want to make sure is that they always know what the next step is, and they actually always know what's going wrong. And I share that, the thing that I always share with teachers, is my own experience as a former teacher. I was an educator. I remember getting an email from my central office saying the superintendent was retiring, and that was in the fall. And then the next thing that I remember hearing about it was that we were all being invited to this lemonade party in the high school courtyard and to meet the new superintendent. And I will swear that I was someone who read all my emails, but I don't think I heard anything in between. And I don't think that's a fair position to put anybody visiting a school district in, and so that's something that I always try to make sure doesn't happen to the staff or anyone else in the school districts where I've been as a researcher. And so really, at the end of the day, we, I think, our relationship with you is something that we highly value. It's something that we think is crucial for us as an association, but also us as field directors, to have healthy working relationships with our school committees in our districts. And so obviously, the search is actually really all about that. We're really about making sure that you find the right person for where your district is at this time. There is no perfect candidate in perfect district, what there is is people who actually put each other's feet. I'm happy to take any questions.
Do I have any questions?
Tracy, could I ask you to get back to that, the slide that had the different phases?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Read that?
Yes.
Certainly. And by the way, I'm certainly happy to share this with you.
Tracy, while they're looking at that, can I ask you what searches are currently, MASC is doing right now, or which ones that you're involved with as well?
So the one search that I'm involved with right now is Winchton, which has announced its finalist and is in the sort of that latter stage of the process at this point. I know that Braintree is announcing finalist tonight, because one of my colleagues was just updating me from there. I know that Mashpee, and something else on the Cape, because my boss has been spending most of his time driving to the Cape. We are, and then we have, we have, we've had a couple of, we're just sort of starting, we think a superintendent search has started in two seasons. There's the people who kind of do the fall season, and then there's the people who do the spring season. We're just starting to get the notifications for the people who are doing this. So far, I don't have anything for this.
Following that idea, what is the typical timeline of a thing?
So, I mean, let me start by saying that we can be flexible. I will say that I generally, if you are taking off a search now, so first of all, I wouldn't do anything prior to vacation for what it's worth that you decide today. Mostly because it's a lovely and exciting thing, but I don't think anyone's paying much attention to it at this time of year. But I like to jump right in with gathering information. So if we were doing that, say, in January, I would anticipate that you would be bringing it all together, assuming that we don't have a very snowy second half of the winter, by probably April. I want as much as possible for my spring searches to come in well before the end of school, so that there's time for a transition, there's time for the person who's coming in to really have their feet under them in terms of what the next year's budget's going to look like. Ideally, if there still are crowd meetings or what have you going on at that stage in the game, that's wonderful. But I want them to actually be a presence who's known within the district rather than sort of like an email as people are going out the door.
Does anybody have any other questions?
So Tracy, as I was going over some of your materials, and even looking at this right now, it sounds like MASC does a lot of the work, a lot of like the behind the scenes work, and the committee basically reaps the benefits of that, whereas we don't have to vet the references and, like I know Stephen, things along the lines of, like, you tell the successful candidates or those that aren't, you're the one that breaks the news.
We make the unhappy phone calls, yes.
And you do the reference checks and things like that.
And one of the things actually that I will say is also a benefit of having the association do it is because we are in nearly every district across the state, like just about every school committee in Massachusetts and that part, we do have working relationships with almost all districts. And so when I get in a list of applicants, which by the way are confidential, they're confidential within the office, the first thing that I do is I share it with the other field directors and with our executive director and say, okay, what do we know? Because I want to know whatever the stories are, I want to know whatever the reputations are. If there is a story to know, I want to know what the story is. So I want to make sure that I'm walking into your search committee, who have then reviewed all of the applications with all of the information that's at the association's disposal, which tends to be fairly wide. But yes, we are always happy, I mean, if school committee members want to make reference calls once we get there, that's entirely fine. But certainly, all of the sort of compiling, you know, compiling applications, making sure they're accessible, working with the search committee and making sure they have their questions answered, and just generally being available, you know, putting together the interview questions, making sure you have access to good draft interview questions if you want them. All of those are things that are part of the job, yes.
Can you say a little bit more about phase one there? Focus group survey, what other community stakeholders would be involved, and how would they be involved?
So, I mean, the first thing I will say is that it is entirely up to you. There are particular ones that you want to make sure are involved, that's entirely up to you. I do always make sure, so we now, as a matter of course, will close to public survey, and I will become almost annoying to your administration in terms of asking them to please share that as much as possible. One thing in particular that I really encourage, I mean, everyone thinks to put it in the parent newsletter, and they usually get to blast it out to faculty, I really encourage sharing it with students as well, if you think students don't have opinions about administration, right? But I also know that not everybody's going to fill out a survey. And so something that I have found, so I've been doing this job for 10 years, something that I have found is really important in terms of getting the read of the people who work in the district, is to be at your scheduled faculty meetings and ask for 10 to 15 minutes. Because if I just show up in a school and say, I'm in the library, teachers don't have time for that. Like, they've got, they need to go to the bathroom, right? They need to make copies, they need to get their lunch, they don't have time to talk to me. If it's part of what they already are scheduled to do, they're more than happy to share. And that also gives me an opportunity to give them a sense of the search. I also try to do the same thing with central administration. And ideally, if I can get the secretaries, the custodial staff, school nutrition, I have been with all of those people in the past, I, you know, again, people who have real insight, I'd like to be able to meet with student council if possible. And then one of the things I ask you all is for your best read on how to do the public input sessions. So you may have a community where nobody's going to come out to a meeting and you have to do it online. I know in regional, sometimes people feel it's really important to make sure that you hit every ten. Happy to do that, whatever it is that needs to be done there. I also, in the past, have met with county administrators, which first of all, is not a bad kind of political move to be a little bold about the statement, but they also have insight in terms of what is the district doing well from their perspective, and what do they need to work on in terms of that perspective? And of course, we know those relationships matter. So those tend to be, apparently there's anything else, those tend to be the main things that I do. And then, of course, I share my contact information widely and say, if you think of other things, you know, send me an email, get in touch. And all of that then comes back to you. The things that I share, first of all, you know, we say that we come back to the leadership profile, which essentially is, here is what your district needs at this point, which would then go into the application or the brochure once you approve it. But the other thing that I report back is essentially, I mean, I was on a school committee, anything that I heard that I think you should know, I make sure I bring back to you. And that's really what I mean in terms of it being an opportunity for you to kind of do an internal assessment without, you know, without it being a strategic plan or all that kind of thing. If I'm going to go ask people what the district is doing well and not doing well, and what they need to work on, you should know that, right? That's information you can use.
I have one question just based on that. You mentioned something about, you know, going out with the intercity communities and speaking to the parents. I've received a lot of emails from parents who very much want to be involved in the interview process, and there's just no way to.
And they all could be too.
Right, for everybody to be there. So what I'm curious about is hearing how you speak to, how we can let voices be heard. Do you type of, like, do you do, like, a presentation, or?
So let me also add that, again, it's one of those where if you have very active PTOs and think I should go to the PTOs, or should go to the site councils, I'm happy to do that too. So when I speak to those groups, it's sort of two halves. The first thing I do is, you know, as I said, I don't ever leave anyone the position of wondering what's happening next. So I say, so here's what you need, so here's who I am. I am not choosing your superintendent, your school committee is. Here's what my job is, but here's what the timeline is to your point, right? Here's when you can expect things to happen. One of the things I think that school committee would understand, but sometimes the general public does not, is that there's a period during which things kind of go quiet, right? So like, there's this big thing, I'm everywhere, I come talk to you, you approve the application, and then it kind of feels like nothing happens. Well, that's because we're collecting the applications, then the next thing that happens is an executive session, there's screenings. So I mean, those meetings will be posted, but there's not going to make any headlines. It isn't until the search committee comes back to you with the finalists that anyone hears the thing again. So I try to make sure that people are clear in terms of that, of that, you know, it isn't that anybody forgot, it's not that nothing's happening, this is the way that it works. And then the three questions that I ask when I do is an input session in person. I ask, what are the strengths of the district? What did this district do well? What do you brag about? What do you want to make sure they continue to do? What is the district need to work on? What do you hope that they stop? What are they weak on? What do they need to actually continue to work on? And then what is the district most need in leadership? Because most of us who aren't directly involved in either superintendency itself or school committee work couldn't necessarily tell you what a superintendent does, but most people can tell you what the district needs in terms of leadership, and those are really my few questions. And I do it, whenever I'm doing it in a larger group, I do it on sticky notes, because that way it isn't only the loudest voices in the rooms that get heard, we make sure that everybody gets a chance to put their things up. And then I take all of that information back, along with the information we gathered from the survey, and put it together in our plan.
Jess.
Yeah, so I see the search committee mentioned in phase three.
Yeah.
Are they also involved in phase one kind of formally or more formally?
No, so what would happen is that you would be putting in, you would be deciding, really during this period of time, what is it you wanted for a search committee, sort of how many people, who you wanted to make sure was represented, what the balance was, that's a school committee decision. And then also, the second part of that is then, if you have these designated seats, how do those get allocated? How do you decide which elementary school parent gets it, which teacher gets it? So that is when that happens. While the files are coming in, one of the things that MASC does is we always make sure that we train our search committees before they meet and before they have applications. While you're familiar with the open meeting law and confidentiality and the state code of ethics, it's not something that necessarily your search committee is going to be. So I meet with them for a training prior to them doing anything else, so that they have all of that information. They sign a statement of confidentiality, they're familiar with the conflict of interest law, those who need to make a file of declaration do that at that point. And then we put them through open meeting law training, particularly because most of their meetings are going to be an executive session, and they need to have an understanding of how that works. And then they've already done that by the time the applications that are all compiled, and they get shared with the search committee confidentially, very confidentially on Trump needs.
Final questions one more?
Thank you.
Thanks, Lori.
Excellent. Thank you, Tracy, thank you very much.
All right, we'll take a few minutes for the groups to switch up rooms. All right. Thanks, Tracy. We got a lap up.
Okay, what is this going to be?
All right, go ahead if you're ready.
Good evening, thank you for having us here. We're going to probably share some information that's very similar to MASC. My name is Dr. Judy Palucci. I'm a former superintendent and now a staff associate with Nezdeq. And here is David Derusi.
My name is Dr. David Derusi, I am the executive director of Nezdeq. This is my second year as the executive director here at Nezdeq, and I have put 34 years, 33 in Massachusetts as an educator, entering from special ed teacher to superintendent in two districts, one year as an interim new membership, and now I'm fortunate enough to be here working for Nezdeq. Judy will be a lead consultant on this, so I heard through some of the talking, we've given you a folder, it's just a very simple outline, we're going to walk you through it, what a search through our company would be like. The proposal you received was for a guidance search, and I think the only difference between comprehensive search versus the guided search is focus groups. But we'll talk about that when we get there, so Judy Scott. We're just going to kind of tag to this. So if you have any questions, spot right in the middle, you'll hear it, it's very similar than mine, so there you go.
So first, I hope you notice that throughout the whole outline, you'll see a lot of communication. I think that's the key to a good search. The search is your search, we are assisting you with that search. So we start with a meeting for planning an organization, setting a timeline, expectations for when things will happen. And we support the development of that timeline, but of course, how you want the search to proceed is up to you. There's also national and regional publication of the vacancy. And one thing Nezdeq has that many organizations don't have is the reach. Generally, we reach not only the New England states, but even beyond. So we set a publication of the vacancy, both regionally, statewide, regionally, and nationally. And so, and so many people who are looking for a superintendency will periodically go to our website, but also receive outreach from us, so it is a lot of.
So a little bit about Nezdeq. We're the New England School Development Council, so Nezdeq's been in business for , I think we're in on 78 now. So we have a wide reach. We run from Connecticut to Maine. We're also members of the National School Development Council, I sit on that board, so that gives us reach, we even write into the New York, Pennsylvania, and Connecticut area. So when we're posting for our application, your future candidates, we send out to all of those agencies. We will send them to New York, we will send them to Connecticut, we'll send them out, as well as our affiliates and our constant contact members, which right now would number close to 6,000 contacts from, like I said, Connecticut all the way up to Maine. So when we put a posting out for you, it goes out. And we've had candidates as far as Singapore, part of an application, I completed a search in New Hampshire last year at KESI, New London, it's regional, and they ended up hiring somebody from Missouri. So we, your posting will get out, we'll give it the coverage it needs.
In all reality, you'll probably have more candidates from Massachusetts, however, with having the wider reach, you'll get to see candidates and interviews with candidates that are maybe further away, and you'll know at the end that you really have the best candidate possible. As far as advertising goes, we do the advertising for you, so there's School Spring, it's a very common place for people to go for, who are searching for a superintendency. But there's also Top School Jobs, that's the N B publication, AAFA online announcement, National Alliance of Black School Educators, Association of Latino Administrators, and then a Professional Diversity Network. So we have a lot of means to get the news out there. Certainly, through a search with Nezdeq, no one in the region will not know that you are the chosen superintendent.
Another piece we will work with the school committee on is developing the application letter, and we feel that's an important part for the liaison of this search with us, because you get a chance to highlight your community, your school district, you're basically going to put the letter together so that if I see a posting for the job, I'm going to be able, as a superintendent who's interested, look at that letter, learn so much about where you are as a district, and then the idea is you're selling me to say, hey, this is a great place, come here and work. And that's something we would work with the school board. Anything we do with you is through the board, the committee, approved by the committee, so we don't make any decisions with regards to outreach, what the voice of the committee is the voice of the committee. We will help you put it together, we will help package it, you approve it, you put it out.
Okay, so and in addition to the advertising that we'll do, we have a constant contact network, and so this information goes out to just a wide variety of people across the state. As David said a little while ago, the proposal you have, you have in front of you is for a guided search. We can expand that to also include focus groups, that is totally up to you. But I have had experience with focus groups, you get a lot of very good information from those focus groups. We would sit down with you at the very beginning to decide who should we be reaching out to, what type of information. But I have had experience with focus groups, you get a lot of very good information from those focus groups. We would sit down with you at the very beginning to decide who should we be reaching out to, what type of information do we want to gather from people, and what the timeline for that would be.
And the electronic survey we use, we started, you'll have access to that through this proposal, we're seeing an uptick in responses to the online surveys. It's, we, much like other, you know, agencies, we start off with two basic questions, what would you like to see in your next superintendent with skills, what traits? And then we usually ask, the next question would be, what would the, in the first six months, what would be some of the challenges and tasks? But then the online survey also has places where you can put in your open-ended questions, responses, and the way we break it down, it's an anonymous survey, but we can grab how many teachers respond, how many parents respond, how many administrators respond, so they, and we pull all that together, give that to the committee to review, which odds to have, but also if you had made the decision to, all right, we could use that survey, maybe wanted to focus group check, you could pull together a candidate profile out of that. I helped a small, smaller district in New Hampshire, they did the survey, I sat with their liaison, we looked at it, and they built their own profile off that survey. We just found, I had the liaison, we worked it out, she sent me the bullets, we went back and forth, and she basically helped build their own candidate profile.
And then during the time when applications are being received, we are the folks who potential applicants will call if they have any questions, we hold on to those applications, but at the same time, we're in constant communication with you. So if you have questions about, you know, how many applications have come in so far, what does it look like, have we had a lot of response, it's, the communication is ongoing. And so you'll have our telephone numbers, we'll be probably speaking to at least a contact person on the school committee every single during the process.
And again, we put a lot of emphasis, and it's the most difficult part of the search, comes down to the screening committee. So we would help you navigate those waters, we'd help you decide who, how many you'd like on that school committee, screening committee. We will meet the screening committee prior, we will meet posts afterwards. So how that works for us really is, we're with our liaison, we send the information, we have all of this in ginormous number of templates. So if you need the letter that, to recruit people for the screening committee, we have different examples, we give that to you, you put make it yours, you put your name, you send it out. So the screening committee, we recommend anywhere between nine and 12 is manageable. I did a search last year with 22, that was a bit of a, that was cumbersome. But again, so we help you with that, we will train up that screening committee, we'll come in, in person, train them, walk them through the confidentiality laws, rules. We leave it up to the district, some searches that I've been involved in, they will bring a clerk from the town side with one sheet of paper, review confidentiality rules, have everybody sign off. Some districts have their own policies, which we'll review at that meeting with them, sign off the confidentiality pieces big. But that first meeting, what we would do is come in, because you've got a different group of stakeholders, we recommend you look for positions, not people. So you definitely want someone representing the teachers, we always advocate maybe you're your president, a vice president, you want an administrator voice, you may want a PTO parent voice, you may want the special ed parent group. So you look at positions, because you're right, you're going to get inundated, everybody will want to be on it, the goal is get a collective stakeholder voice, you have different opinions at that table. We collect all the applications, what we will do would come in that first day, train everybody, the liaison, Judy, we'd be working together, but when we leave that first day, we do this a little different, each member of that screening committee has access to our link and password to see all the applicants. You may say, why would you give us all the applicants? Nezdech in its history, we wouldn't screen through you unless you asked us to, because I'm not sure, what you may think is really paper, this is a person, this paperwork looks great, versus, you may say, I like this one, and I may say after 33 years, whatever, I don't think any of them fit. So that would not be our job, our job is to give it to all your screening committee members. Individually, they go through, and we have a tool where they can rank them. So after you look at Dave on paper, you have the ability to click on a survey that comes into us, nobody else, one, definitely want to see Dave again, two, some will want to see Dave again, three, not interested in seeing Dave. So that work is done by the screening committee, individually, they do that work. Then we come back for the second meeting, which is scheduled, and what we would have for you is the ranking of how everybody on that screening committee individually saw each candidate. Now there's the real work, there's the deliberation. So you see the top five, and then it's like, how many people do you want to bring back to screen? And we work through that. I have seen that work where somebody that might be in the middle of the pack gets moved to the top of the pack because of the deliberation in the room, I've seen people at the top drop a little, but that's the work of the screening committee, where they're facilitating that. Your search, your candidate pool, we want you to make the best choices. Screening committee, at the end of that, will then say, we want to send these eight people to interview, we do the happy calls, we do the not so happy calls, and we deal with all of that, we work with the committee to set up a schedule, and then screening committee goes to work, screening committee will decide who they want to move forward. Once again, we would have all the reference checks on our end, meaning make sure that their pick works along. Reference checks go either way, I agree, sometimes school committees want to be part of that, sometimes they don't, we have a process to help make that easier for school boards to do the reference checks, but again, that's up to you, to our search. I think it's a valuable piece to break up, if you have five finalists, share amongst the school committee, give each one, because we'll send them out, we'll collect the data based on, give the references for parents, staff you work with, administrator, so they'll send us 15 of those, and I think it's valuable for the school committee at that point to each split some of the work up, because then we each get a feel for the candidate. So when it does come time after the interviews, and you're trying to decide who's the next superintendent, you could turn around and say, well, I checked the references, the parents had a lot of good things to say. You could say, I checked the administrators, they had social, and the staff, and then that's the deliberation. So again, we can go either way with that, we could screen them, check them, but I think it's valuable to, some of them work back to the committee, because you're going to be making those decisions.
And ultimately, of course, it's your decision, who is the candidate that best meets his district's needs. Whether a candidate profile is done solely by the committee or with, through focus groups, that candidate profile, that description of a perfect person for the job, the superintendent here, drives the work throughout the process. So even if you have a screening committee, part of the training is making sure that they are not looking just out of their lens, but out of the lens of, here's what the school committee decided is the ideal candidate, here is the profile of an ideal candidate. So when you're developing questions, you ask questions to get at, is the person that's sitting in front of us meet that profile? And then if you get down to finalists, then you get into the details about, okay, here's our profile, how best do each of these finalists meet that those criteria? And what can we further ask references in order to really find out if that's the right candidate for us? So that candidate profile does drive the process, it's a profile that you all agree to, it's not our profile, it's not a profile developed by the screening committee, but it's something that's really important to make sure that you have a candidate that meets your needs.
And we'll help the screening committee, we have banks of questions, like I said, Nezdech has been doing this a long time, so we have questions, we break them up by categories, so we'll work with the screening committee, we'll give them all this information. Again, the screening process, from our viewpoint is, we always tell the screening, you have to figure it out with each candidate, you have so many questions, your job is you saw them on paper, now bring them in person, that's where you throw the questions, that's where you get a feel, how does this person interact, how, but I also remind school committees, being some of that's interviewed for jobs as a superintendent, there's a piece of where you are also being interviewed by that candidate, they want to, they want to see how you interact with each other, they want to see the bigger picture, how do I feel when I'm sitting in front? So we'll go over that also with the screening committee, because I think that's an important piece. As a kid, they saw your application letter, really think this is where I want to be, the way they interact with that screening committee is very important. Now, once the finalists are chosen, we come back in person, we work with the actual school committee, we have some advice on how to do that, we work the schedule, how do you want the interviews, do you want days in district, you tell us, we set that up, we reach out to the candidates, we fill in the schedule for you, and we go from there. We tend to not be in the interview process, meaning we wouldn't be there for the interviews, you would like Nezdech there, we would be there. The rationale for that is there are moments where the candidate, if I'm in the back of the room, and Judy is, and they think we're the ones conducting the search, I don't want them interviewing to me or Judy, we'd rather them, we're on call, you'll have our cell numbers, should have bumped in the road, can you call, we're ready, we can help you. But again, in the proposal, we'll be there if you want us, that's, that's fine, but we tend to leave, we'll train, we leave that work up to the screening committee, and then the actual work of the board, if you wanted us for those final interviews, we'd be there, we'll set it all up, then you do your job, you let us know. We have the warranty, which we hope we don't have to use, but I see smiles, there is a warranty in our proposal. If for whatever reason, let's say you go through this whole process, and you're like, no, don't like any of them, other than just the cost of us reposting and everything, you get a consultant back and we'll walk you right through the process again. Should for whatever reason, the appointment not last through the first contract here, then once again, we would come back as part of the warranty, you get the liaison, you get the consultant, we do the work for you. So we're hoping that doesn't happen. In that folder, I believe, we're starting to do some work around executive coaching, and it ranges from entry plan support, which we've done before, to strategic planning, strategic audits, we're trying our best to build that relationship. If we build a relationship when we commit with the school committee and the school boards, and I think if we could still manage to work with the relationship afterwards, it would be better for everybody. Superintendents are becoming more and more difficult to find, good ones if you have when you want it to work. You have a draft timeline to take a look at, our search is, where the guided search is minus the focus groups, they run a little bit fast, but the average search is about 120 days, guided search, depending if you do want focus groups added, if not, how many you want, that's up to you. But yeah, they come in closer to that 90, 90 day, because you're not losing weeks for the focus groups and writing it all up. But that's the basic timeline, you can see the benchmarks that we try to hit, and our goal would be to help you build the search you need and facilitate it for you. It's a big task, it's one of the most important jobs of a school committee is to do this work, because you have a lot of time.
Everybody have any questions?
I do. Yeah, so I noticed your developed letter and ad ends before community needs assessed, so are you posting for the job before the community needs assessment?
Yes, that's where I think, once this, you'll make a decision on which group that would represent the search for you. Once we know if it's us, we would ask, the next meeting, we'd come right back, we'd have another in person, the idea is we need a liaison. So once the school board committee decides, the liaison's going to be Albert, he's going to be the liaison. If Albert gets tech, then Albert and I go right, Judy, you go right to work. So what we would do is we'd send some examples, you can go online, on our website, you'll see what an application letter looks like, we'd go right to work on that, the faster it's approved, we help.
If that doesn't have the whole detail of a candidate profile, that's like the basics, you want someone with, with a certification, you want, we would ask you, do you expect experience with certain roles and so on, so that's the basics. The candidate profile gets into a bit more specifics, and so we don't need that.
No, that application letter, as I said, gives you the opportunity to tell somebody what's special about working and living and being here, what is it that makes this environment a special place to work. So that's where, as a school committee, you'd want to pump in some of your, you know, whatever is like new programs, new projects. Also, if we would help you do that, you craft a little bit of our budgets, like we've had , you know, stable budget for the last, our budgets are approved, we've had a stable school committee, those are the things superintendents want to see. They want to know that they're coming into a district that has a level of stability, but there's progress also. And we'd help you craft that. And if it's not that way, that's okay, don't worry about it, it works out. I've been in several districts in my life.
So just a point of clarification, I like myself, I've been doing this 30 plus years right now, multiple searches that I've participated in on all levels, so you keep referring to liaison, right, and it's important the school committee to know that it might not be you two that we're going to be working with.
It's going to be her.
Okay, liaison is from your team. So. We'll be working with you. We'll be working with you. Okay, yeah. Absolutely. Just want to make sure that's.
Oh, no, no, that, we're here, you, Judy, Julie, I'm just going to be here, I'll shadow some of the work, I like to be on the ground with people.
We like to partner up as well, so that we'll never have a conflict, it's always going to be somebody who can respond to you, but I'll be the primary person, but there'll be someone from the school committee, he'll be on the A side, Laurie and.
And then we need one, well Laurie can double as the spokesperson also, because if we get a call at Nezdech, you know, what's going on with the search, we would refer that to your, everything comes back to the committee, so we'd need somebody who can answer those questions for us. But no, we're, Judy's on the point, I'm in here, and again, we, you may see other Nezdech, we're, we have a team, so even in my office, Christina, I think you've talked with Christina, she's, we work as a group, but I mean, I'm trying to train people too, so you may find there's three of us here at this screening committee meeting, just because I'm trying to train people in the process.
Any other questions?
The broad outreach is great, that you go outside of the area, I'm just curious how often you find an outside of the area candidate would be willing to come to such a small district?
I think, you know, I'll, I'll say a little bit from experience, my own experience, I do think the majority do come from the general area in the particular state. I had spent most of my career in Rhode Island, when I was ready for a superintendency, I don't know if you know this, but there's only 38 districts in Rhode Island, so you either have to wait for someone to pass, you know, to move on, it's difficult. I had to go into Maine, so I was in Maine, I had to come back to family, so I threw a circle around Providence and ended up in Massachusetts. So yes, you get candidates from nearby states in general, far fewer candidates will come from outside of England, but there will be some, and there have been some that have come to New England that have been really pretty successful, bring a different perspective, working in different states, you really learn to not take things for granted, because people just generally do things differently. But there's some advantages to having people who understand the Massachusetts way as well, that'll be up to you, but being able to compare candidates from a wider, wider stretch, I think is very advantageous.
There have been moments, if we get, people contact us, the superintendent will call us, that's another piece of the outreach. I, and I know of at least two superintendents out of state trying to get back into state. We had one from New Hampshire take call last year, did a search for us, so there's this kind of cross-border, people trying to get back in that had left, people that, you know, looking to just start something brand new. Massachusetts still is a very attractive state for education too. Massachusetts still is a very attractive state for education too. Any others? All right. Thanks for coming in.
No, it's a pleasure. I have my contact, that contact.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks, guys.
Truly appreciate it.
Just, I guess, to give a little, you can grab a seat. I think the search, some committee, Laurie, that's you and Megan and Jeff. And take all this in, get a meeting in the next little bit of time. And then our next meeting, we'll make a decision on what we're gonna do and get started.
Great idea.
All right. All right, yeah, just sorry. How many were you on? I don't know. Okay, we're gonna, as if we're starting over. All right. Let's start with our public comments. So is anybody here public comment? Yeah, all right. Anyone who's here for public comment, if you don't mind, head up to the front of the room, name and address and who you'd like to talk to. How many are just supposed to? Anyone else? All right. We're gonna try to stick to our comment policy, which is three minutes, but you're the only one tonight, so go ahead. Right up there, it'd be great, thank you.
Jason McCatt Berlin. My son Kaden is a fifth grader at BMS. He spends almost two hours a day on the bus. I'm here to extend mine and my wife's support for the work Bob Holmes has done regarding making the bus routes more equitable in terms of how much time kids spend on the bus. We are in favor of the proposal to reverse the afternoon routes to swap as outlines. It should be noted that running the routes currently takes longer than they need to. The routes can be redesigned to help take much less time than they do. That's not hypothetical, this has been proven when Chip Durant, with the substitute driver filling in on the route, my son spent much less time on the bus than he does today. I understand route redesign is out of scope with the current discussion, but it is worth noting that we may not be in this situation to begin with if the routes took less time overall. Personally, I'm willing to accept that I chose to live on the edge of town furthest from the school. And my long, my son would have the longest commute as a result. But the excessive time the route takes is what brings me here today. As a band-aid to poor route design, I support the proposal to flip bus three. And with an additional request, to please consider route efficiency and optimization during the upcoming contract process. I wanna thank Bob Holmes for the amount of time and energy he has put into analyzing the bus routes, proposing the solution, seeking input from neighbors and townspeople, working with the district and NRT, and now presenting to the school committee. In offering my feedback to Bob, I looked at an additional dimension of the data. Are more kids positively impacted than negatively impacted by how much? Bob's analysis will show that the proposal results in equity that all students will have the same overall daily commute time. But I was curious, how many kids will gain time versus how many kids will lose time in this proposal? My question is rooted in the assumption most people whose daily commute is going to get shorter will likely support flipping the routes. People whose daily commute is going to get longer will likely object to flipping the routes. By doing the math on what the current commute is versus the proposed commute, you can see how much time is gained by shorter commutes versus how much is lost by longer commutes. But the assumption that shorter is good and longer is bad in mind, we can look at the data. If more kids save more time and fewer kids lose less time, the route should flip. If more kids lose time and fewer kids save time, the route should not flip. Bus three is skewed heavily in favor of flipping the route based on this criteria. Forty-one students benefit from the change versus 21 are negatively impacted by the change. There is more time saved than there is time lost. Seventeen students will lose 21 minutes a day, but that enables 27 students to save 30 to 63 minutes a day. More students save more time than relatively fewer students moving less time. And in larger review and redesign of routing in the future, please enable a proposed solution starting after the holidays this school year, so kids aren't spending almost two hours a day on the bus.
Thank you. Final call, anyone else? All right. Any communications, I know other than we didn't receive many communications regarding the bus situation, both in favor of all and against switching. So does anybody else have any other communication they received?
Did you notice emails reported or people sent my drive?
Yeah, I thought they were going to all of us.
I was expecting the comments on...
We also, yeah, we've received a lot of comments as well. That would come off with that discussion.
We got the bus.
If there were separate emails, it wouldn't be that...
Sure, yeah. I thought that went to everybody.
I didn't get any emails.
Yeah, I just got the synopsis that has a bunch of comments from the emails, but not the...
Thank Jason's email. I had that more. Yeah, I sent it just to you guys for the phone. Yeah, so that might be the sorry of this thing. But a lot of those emails were reflected on that board.
And we just tried, we're getting a few here and there. So we talked to Mike and John will talk a little bit later about it. So that's why we just, some survey with everybody, so we can caption everybody. Instead, I just want to email here, one email there. That'd be a good, maybe it's caption of those comments.
Anybody else have any other?
If I could, I, I just, I heard you guys say they just put comments from the email. Those comments are just from the survey, not from the email. Just wanted to clarify that, because it is confusing.
All right, no others? All right, the consent agenda, will we get a motion on that? I only see the meeting minutes in there, I don't see the warrant in there. Is there a warrant for them?
There, there were warrants signed.
There should be warrants, yeah.
They are not in the file.
We'll make sure they're in the next, apologies. All right, so should we just go with the minutes? I don't want anyone to vote on anything they have on the seat. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda November 12, 24 meeting minutes, please?
So moved.
Second.
Megan, board, okay. Any discussion on those?
I don't know if it matters, but it says that Julie Lee was present instead of me.
All right.
Nobody. I listed farther down, but it's the top section.
Yeah, I see that there. Yeah, all right. So may I have a motion to amend the motion to include Elizabeth Metzey's name and straight Julie Lee name in the minutes?
So moved.
Jess?
Second.
Board, any discussion on that? Sorry. All those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Yes. All right, so the amended motion passes. We are now into the original motion to approve the minutes. Any discussion on minutes? All right, and all of them favor this motion?
Aye.
Yes. All right, that motion passes the November meeting minutes. Okay. Next up is the chair's report. I really don't have anything specific to say of the other agenda, I guess, on the agenda. So we'll just continue on to superintendent's report, please.
Thank you. So I apologize, I got sort of my gear for a report tonight. So good evening, good evening, before we go anywhere, just wanted to sort of reiterate what Mike said, to congratulate our high school football team, who are Super Bowl champions. I know that making the decision on behalf of the school committee and myself to have that half-day last Friday was a certain bit mixed feelings. But seeing my students win and having that many people in the stands certainly moved them on, was a memory that none of our students will forget. Not only for the students that were playing, but also our students that haven't yet to be that close. July Stadium is that close to the field, and some of our students actually being on the field. So we wanna congratulate our, our high school football team. Being a cheerleader, that did some great work as well too. We'll be parade for them on, on this coming Saturday at 10 o'clock, starting at the West Wilson Town Hall. So please be able to make it, join us. We also have something special planned for our football team that we're working on right now for Friday long as well too. That we're just trying to keep that sort of a secret until, until Friday takes place as well too. Congratulations to that. Mike, you have said something lately that really holds true for this moment, that we need to celebrate our successes, right? And this is one of our successes. We should absolutely be proud of our, our kids, the way they handle themselves on the field as well too. And it's just really remarkable to see them doing that. So congratulations to those guys. I'm gonna this time ask our student rep, I know Matt Downs here with us, they know you have a little video you'd like to share with us, Matt?
Yeah, I don't have too much to share this time. The first thing I got was some student council events we recently held. So we had our Thanksgiving food drive, which we hold every year. It went really well, so we donate a whole bunch of canned goods to the Boylston and Berlin fantries, as well as we put together a couple of Thanksgiving dinners for, dinners for Tonto families. And then our upcoming Stuko thing, we're doing something a little bit weird around this year. We always have our winter spirit week. This year, we're doing it combined, middle and high school. So I'm looking forward to it, it's gonna be a lot of fun, I think. We've never done it before, so it might be a little bit crazy, but... And sports-wise, obviously, as I mentioned, our Lions football team won the, for the third year in a row, won the state championship. And also, the girls' varsity soccer team, for the second year in a, in a row, made it to the state final four competition, so that was really awesome. And other than that, there's not really much else to mention that I have. So I think that's...
Yeah, we need to make sure that the soccer team doesn't get a little bit rattled.
No. We celebrated, I think we were in Dallas with the last...
Yes, we did, yeah, absolutely, yeah. But yeah, final four is pretty solid.
Agreed, agreed, absolutely.
Thank you, thanks, Matt. So the next item on the agenda is proposal for the bus route changes for the town of Rowan. At this time, I'd like to introduce, for those who don't know, Bob Holmes, who will give us a brief presentation on the proposal, the proposed bus changes. After Bob presents, I'm gonna have John Campbell, who'll provide us some data based on a survey that was sent out to parents at Berlin. So, and I thank John, he actually spearheaded that for me, so I appreciate that. And after that, I'll ask, be asked from school community to just give me a little bit of direction on how to proceed as a super middle school. And I'll look forward to that feedback on that, making this final decision on this. So I'll try to go with Bob Holmes at this time, please.
So good evening, folks. School committee, superintendent again, thanks for inviting me and sharing some of your time. If I haven't had the opportunity to meet you, my name is Bob Holmes. I'm a parent in Berlin, I have three daughters in grades three and five at Berlin Memorial School. What I'm about to show you is four years' worth of lobbying with past school administrators to make an improvement to the bus routing in Berlin. I'll try to keep it concise for you. So to start, I want everyone to know that as a family that utilizes the bus, we recognize its job one is to get our kids safely to and from school. It does that very effectively year over year, and we're very appreciative of that. What I wanna also highlight is that buses also create the first and last experience of school for kids. And while we are grateful for the system we have, there's an opportunity to make it even better for our kids, and it's free. So as mentioned, as Jason mentioned, and perhaps you, as you've heard from others that have written in, today, the wake buses run in Berlin. The afternoon routes are run backwards, they're run in reverse as compared to the morning routes. What that means is the student that's picked up first in the morning spends the entire route on the bus before they get to school, and then that same student's dropped off last. So they have, they make their way all the way back before they're dropped off. This might mean, and it does mean in some cases, over an hour of school and an hour home. As a parent of kids affected by this, that are in this situation, I can tell you that they are absolutely drained by the time they get off the bus. It's a tough experience. I work 35 miles from my house, and I don't spend that much time in the car going to and from work. I think it's, it's unreasonable to expect an elementary school kid to do that, especially in a small town where all children live within three miles of the school. Fortunately, there's a really simple solution. And that is to simply run the routes in the same order in the afternoon as you do in the morning. There's a few benefits. First of all, it's one route for bus drivers to memorize. You just repeat it, morning and afternoon. The child that's picked up first, they might have a long commute to school, but they'll benefit with a short commute on the way home, because they'll be the first dropped off. And it creates, you'll, you'll see, that creates perfect equity for every student. Every child has exactly the same amount of time on the bus from each bus route that they use. I'll give you an example for bus three. So what I'm showing here is the current routing for bus three. The total amount of time a student spends on the bus is plotted in the Y-axis. And these are the various stops that that bus makes across the X-axis. You can see the disparity from someone that lives on Linden Street versus someone that's on Highland or one of the other addresses. There is not a correlation between distance from the school. It's not like we live in a town where there's an extreme other side of the track section where someone would expect an hour ride to school. As I said, everyone lives within three miles of the BMS on this list. Yet there's a pretty substantial disparity. By simply switching that, flipping the PM route back, so it runs in the same order as the morning route, you get this. It is, it is mathematically perfect equity for every student. Everybody's got an hour on the bus. It might be five minutes in the morning and 55 minutes on the way home. It might be 30 minutes in the morning and 30 minutes on the way home. It might be 55 minutes in the morning and 5 minutes on the way home. But everybody spends the same amount of time a day. This is one of those like side to side. As I said, 60 minutes per day, perfectly level loaded for every student. There's one route for the driver to memorize. And by my math, the driver's getting homework, doing it this way. And this is excluding, you know, some of the optimizations that Mr. McCatt mentioned that are out of scope for this conversation, but recommend for maybe for you at the summer. Same thing applies to bus two. You've got the same disparity. Bus two is a bit shorter than bus three, so it'll be a 45-minute total duration per day per child that buys the bus. Level loaded, every day. And similarly, you get a similar effect on bus one. Bus one is a 55-minute route, and so students will spend 55 minutes all proportioned differently morning and afternoon on where their pickup time is on the route. There aren't that many opportunities where a little tweak can make a sweeping broad improvement to a community. This is one of those opportunities, and your vote can enable it tonight. I do wanna share, before we get to that point, a little context about how we got here. So I want you to understand what the families in Berlin have been living with for four years. In three months, it'll be four-year anniversary. This was first raised, at least on my radar, in March of 2021. A different family in Berlin brought this up. They found their child was exhausted getting off the bus after an hour commute. And they brought it up to the then director of bus and finance, Robert Congry. Within a week of that inquiry, directed to the lesson of the red marks, Mr. Congry replied the following. What you propose is generally how we like the routes to be structured, so overall drive time is similar for all students. He passed the request to NRT, our bus company, and within seven days, the lead dispatcher of NRT said the following. Bob, I think this is something we can accompany. In the past, the route was run like this for a student with medical reasons. That student no longer rides the bus. Both Bob, both Mr. Congry and NRT committed to making that change, and within weeks, in April, he was in power. And the routes were changed in 2021. Everybody's happy. In August of 22, at the beginning of the next school year, the routes were published, and we quickly noticed that they reverted back. I had reached out to Mr. Congry's replacement to give their title. And Ms. Kniski took his place. I reached out to Ms. Kniski, and over the course of several months, several weeks, excuse me, informing her, getting her the backstory. She agreed and committed to making the change on October 17. I replied to me, the morning, the bus company will be rerouting this route in the afternoon. They'll do their best to have it done on October 17. It'll be different than what you had, as I was missing some stops that were added, after the school started. Great, we're gonna fix it. You might remember in 2022, post-COVID, there was a complete crisis and shortage of bus drivers. So before this was enacted, well, I'll go real close, we lacked better terminology. And we didn't have bus drivers in any cases. We didn't have buses at all, we were combining routes. And so really, the, the year was spent triaging a bus driver crisis. So incredibly, this was, but understandably, this was de-prioritized to just try to get some buses going. We affected that in 2022. We were still optimistic in August of 23, when the routes were published, that it would be there. It wasn't. Again, the old, the old pattern. So I had reached out to, again, Ms. Kniski, former superintendent Costello, dragging the backstory with me and informing them on what happened and what we were hoping to do immediately after they were published. We had a few weeks of back and forth with former superintendent Costello, and she expressed her frustration that she couldn't get through to NRT on this. In her words, in 23, "The battle reversed, the bus route has become insurmountable at this point, and I will try to understand and to demand the reasoning from NRT." They maintain it will take longer, that all buses operate in this manner, yada, yada, yada. At this point, she was even... At this point, she was even considering bringing in legal counsel to strong-arm NRT and to get it done. Where we landed was bottom box. "Now, fully aware of your concerns, I can advocate earlier in the year for changes such as yours to be honored. I made a reminder on my phone that day, remind Carol of July 1st to follow up with And when that reminder came up, I sent her the email, and then a couple of days, she got back to me. This is in July 10th, summer before this school year. "Thank you for your email, Bob, I haven't forgotten it with you, as soon as we begin bus route discussions with NRT, I will push to have this changed. I'll reach out to them this week, just as a reminder, that we have discussed making the change for this year, so they can take it into consideration as they plan." Great. Me being annoyingly persistent, I reminded her again several weeks later, actually shortly after I saw the retirement notice, "Hope you're great, yada, 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 you have an opportunity to connect with NRT for this year." And I never heard her response. August of 24, the routes are published again, and of course, they're in the same, same old pattern. So at that point, I had reached out immediately to the superintendent, to the school committee, probably within hours, maybe minutes of the route being published, right? There was a flurry of emails, and this process has taken us where we are today. The information, this information was presented last week at the BMS Parent Teacher Organization Link at the school, and here, of course, today. Bottom line, we've got a number of families that are really looking to have this change done. It's, it does create, as you can see, perfect equity, the math is beautiful, perfect equity for every student. It's free and it's simpler. Most importantly, it does create a better experience for our kids every day. Want to just highlight again that the administration has been aware of this issue for nearly four years. There has never been pushback, there has never been an argument to not do it. I don't think there's a reason to not do it, but for one reason or another, we've been living with it for four years. Sorry to ask, that while I understand changing routes mid-year is not ideal, please, as you consider voting, do not ask these families to wait a little bit longer to get a change. So if you have any questions, they'll be happy to take, but that's all I have to find.
Good question. On your, like, first or second slide, it had on the way home, it was the second slide, thirteen minutes to home for the first kid off the bus?
Which one?
I was curious, the second slide.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yes.
No, next one, back.
Thirteen minutes to home.
Yeah, yeah.
With the address?
I was curious what, yeah.
So the bus actually, I used the published bus routes to calculate all of this, and the route starts, the clock starts while the bus is sitting at the BMS parking lot. And it sits there for 12 minutes, loading kids, and then it goes and drops the first child off. So the child, you know, if they're the first one on the bus, immediately they might sit on the bus for 13 minutes, but it's actually driving for 60 seconds. Or if they're last on, you know, if they're loaded, if they jump off last, it might be just 60 seconds, but that's, that's why that's low.
Even if all three buses are there, they only dismiss one bus at a time, so the bus will be sitting there for a while.
Right. Any questions? Wal, thanks.
Thank you.
I remember last year, your conversation. We spoke a lot about it, I mean, I'm also a family that's on the, we do have another side of the tracks in town, I mean, the school's on that side of the track, we're on this side of the track. And I'm one of those families too, and I specifically remember talking to you and speaking to Carol and Nancy at the time. I remember their commitment and promise to you to do this. It's just another one of those things that was dropped this summer, but. Yeah.
It gets dropped every year.
Every, every year it does, but last year specifically was tougher, because Nancy's first year doing it whole. I remember specifically sitting in a conversation with you and those two, and the commitment that they made to you, and your emails show exactly what happened, so. I'm with you, I, I'm with you. John, you're going to have a say about the comments from the parents. I'm with you. What I am concerned about, the comments we received, those in favor are a general, "Yeah, I'm in favor, let's do it." The ones that are against, they're a lot more detailed about how significantly this will impact families. So I just, I don't know what's going to happen. I just want you to understand that it might be perfect equity in time, I mean, I love equity, it's all, it's all equity in time, everybody's equal, but it's not for the families that are voting these comments. There are some that are, you know, that they're, they're going to be hurting if it's me, but that said, here we go.
Mike, I would just add that, I understand that. Please consider that the families on the short end of this thing have been hurting for four years. We've been enduring this, right? It's not convenient to have this.
I know you feel that way.
So I know the change is tough.
I know you feel that way. I just don't think every family feels that way, but.
Can I just, so, my kids are now at Tejando. This is more than four years old, this has been going on, like, my kids left the building before this ever got fixed. The routes get published, like, a day, every year it gets a little bit closer to the first day of school, and then, not only is it just that they promised to reverse the route and they don't, but they, all the corrections that were made the year before, where you have kids being picked up on the wrong side of the street, you have kids walking down South Street, it all reversed. And then everyone calls and they say, "You got to give it a week, it's the first week of school, you have to be patient." He doesn't have a chance to rectify it before school starts, so I'm sorry that it's December and we're doing this, but no one's ever given a chance over the summer to fix it. That's our fault, the school district's fault.
So like I said, like, I'm one of the families that is, in fact, this will impact our schedule, it will make it harder for us, but I'm also supportive. But I didn't mean to steal John's thought.
You already did, stolen, but no, stolen. Just real quickly, I, you know, we wanted to make sure that everybody had a chance to hear their voice heard. You can see in the graph, about two-thirds of the family favorite, I don't have the data to support it, but I would guess that it's one-third of the people who would benefit, and one-third of the people who wouldn't see a lot of change, so fine, we can make the change. And that last one-third of the people that, that we're talking about, who've made their childcare arrangements for the year, their work arrangements for the year, I felt that the observation about the people opposed being, you know, having a more concrete set of reasons, this is, is very accurate, and it's hard. If I can go a little further with your permission?
At my own, it's true.
Yes, thank you. It is what happens every year. Last year, I checked, while we were talking earlier, we got the bus routes August 27th or August 29th started, and it's not the first time. This is not so much school district created, as it is our inability to motivate our employee at NRT. Because you said something at Link the other night, I think it's the same list, they just keep copying it, and I thought, oh my goodness, he's probably right. We get all this talk from them, but, "Oh, we're working on it, we're putting a lot of time into it this year." And it is, it's the same bus routes. And I think that's where, whatever you decide with this, and you know, Mike, you know, I would love to see the kids get that, I think we have to weigh parent concerns in that as well. But we have to be, it has to be July 1st, we are on these people, we can't accept bus routes, what, maybe, what, August 1st, August 27th, maybe? Because it's just, it's just bad business. Because when it comes on the 27th, there is literally, then they start, "Oh, we need a week." And then they start to tweak a couple of things, you know, every year I have to call Sergeant Goulden, "This bus stop's not safe, these kids have to cross the street, there is no sidewalk here." It's a huge time slot. And for what? Because it's easier for them just to copy the bus route over. But yeah, it was, we had 70 parents respond to this, that's probably about a third of the households in the school. The other thing that I thought was interesting, and Summer brought it up, several people mentioned Tejando having the same problem. So this is bigger than just little Rowan, and I think, you know.
BEES as well.
Yeah.
But it's not a problem at BEES, nobody has complained, or, I mean, I have not heard, and I.
They were reversed at BEES for at least one of the years that we've been here, and then it went back, so.
I think the issue, and we talked about this last year, the issue is, I think Rowan needs another bus, and we actually threw that in the budget, full $60,000, I think. So I think to have kids on a bus in kindergarten for an hour is a lot, I don't think it's right, but it was just something, and again, that would be 100% going back to the town, right? If you need another Rowan bus, whether it be for Tejando or BMS, it's Rowan cost, and you know, it was a very tight squeeze last year, so we were not able to accommodate that. The difference in Boylston is I don't think any kid is on the bus for longer than 30 minutes or a day.
Permission to talk?
Yes.
So at Boylston, it's, it's not more than an hour, it's 45 minutes to an hour, we get that all call when they're clear every day. The issues with Boylston, again, we got that bus route two days before school started, the other issues were unsafe stops, that again, that takes our time at the end of the year, and that week to, give us a week, give us two weeks. And there was a family waiting for, I think, a month this year about an unsafe stop, that was Superintendent Gannon finally took care of for this family, and they were very grateful. But that is an issue, the time needs to be bumped up for this coming.
Yeah, you didn't have. Yeah, sorry, so, so, not that I need to defend anybody, the only issue's really on us as a district, right? So Aaron and I could attest for working in the regional school district for many years, there's a window that we have during summer, we're supposed to submit our bus routes, and, and that's what happened this year. We're supposed to submit our bus routes, submitting changes, get the feedback from families, look at the students who are graduating, don't log any bus, look at our preschool kids who are coming on, all of their addresses, and submit that all to the bus company. It doesn't seem to be from the emails that I've seen that we submitted that at time of the end of the summer. And for us not to submit it to them, that's what the issue was. So when I, my first day in August, I was like, where are the bus routes, where are the bus routes? And we did a lot of pushing to get them, for the day we did, and I think it was shortly after I started that we got them in there, but there's always a window that you're giving during summer to put all that information in, that we missed this past summer, in full disclosure, you need to know that. The second part about that is, is we're in the process of starting to negotiate a new contract with our bus company, and that'll be one of the things that will be about, that was important to us, about making sure that we have these bus routes in time, so that if there is an error, are there in the unsafe bus route, that we can make those changes after, before school starts, but not after. But in all regional school districts, you do have a window of opportunity to submit those bus routes.
If I can clarify, we are not renegotiating with our bus company, we're putting it out to bid.
That's right, thank you.
So do we have to vote on this?
So I'm not asking you to vote on this, I'm asking you to give me some guidance. Personally, I think this is, this makes sense, the one thing I'm asking from school committee, does it make sense now in January to do this, right? So that's why we brought the survey out to families and get some input from them. This will absolutely be something that we put in place for the next year for sure. In the fall, it will be, in the summer, I should say, we'll be putting this in place, as well as looking at the other routes, and getting input from secretaries and principals about, are these the routes that we need for next year, and submitting them to NRT, or whoever the bus company is, thanks, Aaron, for that clarification. But I just need some direction from school committee, is this something that you need me to do now, or is this something that you want me to wait on until the fall? I do have to say that seeing the emails of exchange back and forth, I think there were some promises made that this wouldn't be in place, so I just, I'll give you all that information, but hopefully you guys can give me some direction with it. Hey, now, we're doing that right now, because winter break is coming. That's right. They need some time to notify. That's right. Ads need time to rearrange, get this stuff happening. That's right. It's not like we're doing it in October and it's taking place that week. So when I met first with Michael Graham-Pon from NRT, he wouldn't, they wouldn't contain it during the fall, like spring, by the time, he needed to do this after Christmas break, so we could train the bus drivers, whatever that looks like, to make sure that we knew and can go over on that.
I mean, that's, that's in a monthly way, I mean, most people have their January work schedule, so I, I don't support kids being on the bus for more than an hour, but just from a working parent perspective, like, you, you know, every second counts for you getting home to that bus at a time, so I respectfully, I would like to suggest maybe after February break, just to allow parents more than a month to adjust their work schedules to get home at a different time.
Sorry.
So first of all, I have to compliment Bob on that presentation, because I don't know how you could look at that and, and not be horrified, not only by the amount, the amount of inequity that is, that is there, but also how long it's taken you to get here. And you've been told yes so many times along the way, and you've still had to persist. I empathize if this was, you know, if this was December 20th or something, I feel like it's December 10th, I feel like there's enough time, and, and I believe me, I'm very much on the fence about it, because I get both sides, but I just feel like it's really terrible to have these kids on the bus that long, twice a day, I just, that, it doesn't sit right with me. And we talk a lot about diversity, equity, inclusion, and that is not equity. So thank you for taking the time to do that, because it really made it clear.
Anybody else? Yeah, Jason, you look right.
Well, I was on Wal Holmes, I am on Wal Holmes Road too, and my kids were in that same situation, and it was awful, and I just ended up driving them most of the time because of that, you know, that's not ideal for many reasons, so I just, and I do think it's really unfair, you know, to have been going there for this long, so I, like, I'm, you know, I would be like, yeah, like, let's change it now, but I really do worry about the families that have to change their own schedules, so I think they just had a really great idea to wait until February, but, like, to do it this year and don't delay, you know, until next year.
There goes, one thing the bus company, I'll correct you if I'm wrong, the reason for doing it now is the break, if we were to start in January one way, we go until February, and then make the switch, would that not be the same issue as if we were to decide on October? Yeah, they really, they want the break, the change to take place during the Christmas break, right? And, and then, again, the training, they, they can hire, bring the bus drivers in, they can practice the routes with no kids on it, so they want to be able to do that, and Christmas break is a long, longer than usual, so they'll be able to do that as well too, and, and so that's the direction, and this, at this point, and I think Wal said that in the presentation, there's zero cost with them saying to us in January, this, at this break, this is where we can have that. They did not give me a suggestion of February, like, we'll spend it through January.
Now, separate, I was going to ask Mr. Campbell, and this might be more of a Mrs. Rappo question, how often do kids end up back at the school, because they didn't, and what are the, what grades do they have to be in to get off the bus by themselves?
They have to be, they can't be in elementary school, because.
Okay.
I think it's 13, maybe 12.
And how often do they bring them?
Very frequently.
Okay. So they have, do not be in elementary to be let off the bus alone?
I think, I, I, and this is, that's a judgy question.
I think it's usually a discretion where it's like.
It's 12 or 13.
But sometimes, like, for fifth graders, if the parent has talked to the bus driver, they'll.
Well, then there's that whole picture, so sometimes parents and bus drivers move their own ways.
Rowan is a, a small town, they generally, but, so if those parent is not there, they will send the kid back to the school, so that would obviously be, we don't want.
It's an experience that involves them, so. But I think if it's at a house, they leave them at the house, like, if it's a stop and there's no parent there, so like, I know a lot of.
If it's at a, if it's a kindergartner and there's nobody there, they're not letting them go.
No, they're.
At Rowan, they're not.
You boys, people must be tired.
I don't know what you guys are doing on there.
Yeah, my longest. Yeah, yeah, it's hitting the kindergarten, yeah, it has to be a parent, yeah.
So respectfully, there, there is a cost to the parents who now will have to leave work potentially early, that they arrange their jobs to get home at a certain time, and in terms of the length of the break versus February break, both, if you celebrate Christmas and New Years are both during the weeks, so there, that still remains only five working days for them to do that schedule, because I doubt they're going to have their drivers come in on Christmas or New Year's Day. So respectfully, you know, they have the same amount of time to train their drivers at February break versus winter break, and again, likely most people have had their schedule at least a month in advance, some two or three months in advance, so, you know, we are a more diverse economic district, and our calendar has not recognized that fully recently, and so I think this would be an appropriate time to recognize that time needs to be allowed for people to adjust.
Yeah, Bob, this conversation specifically that you're having, you've made several presentations to the Rowan parents, so it's not, it's not the first time the Rowan parents. So it's not, it's not the first time Berlin parents know this is coming.
Right.
How many times have you presented this to parents, to group, like official groups?
Formerly, last weekend, the Parent Teacher Organization was the first time I stood up and gave this pitch to any Berlin parent in one of those.
And normally conversations happen all about parents.
About four years before.
I hear what Jess is saying, and I'm with you. I'm one of these parents who will be impacted, my kids are first off, plus last off. It does impact our situation. But I also, you know, this statement came up during COVID for the first time. Schools are not taken, right? It's not our child, our responsibilities to educate, get them home safely, and make sure it's fair. So even though this personally impacts me and our family and our schedule, we're gonna have to figure something out. It's also, I look at the bus and they're empty because kids are, there's a lot of activities after school. Kids are staying after school, it's all sports, basketball after school right now. Just about the entire school is playing. There's enrichment activities, there's the aftercare programs on the bus in the afternoon. My kids get home much earlier than they're stated time. So I will support this for January. And that's what we need to do tonight is tell Al if we support or not, because Al's gonna make this decision. It's within his jurisdiction. So.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, I, I think you could ask them if you could have a little bit of a grace period, if one of you guys could talk to NRT and maybe you've got like even a little bit more time so people can arrange your schedule. I am in that camp of, I feel for people that have that situation where they, they're relying on the bus times for their work. But at the same point in time, you know, I talked on the phone with Bob in September and this was supposed to be done in September. So the fact that we're talking about this now, I'm, I was shocked. I thought it was already done.
Yeah.
And I mean, back in April of twenty twenty-one, Bob Conroy just made the decision in a week and it was just like, all right, this is happening. So I feel like this has been the reason that it's the way it is, is because of mistakes on the district's part. It was decided in April of twenty twenty-one, has clearly shown that the routes should be reversed. We talked about adding a bus last year. I think again, that is the actual solution to this problem. I don't think kids should be on the bus for an hour. But that's just not in cards right now. So I think the right thing to do is to make this change and maybe see if there's, you know, to Jess's point, we're what, like ten, fifteen days out from?
There's MLK Day.
Yeah, so right, exactly. Can you at least get a little bit more time to make the change? That's not, it's just gonna give people that extra time to figure out what they need to do.
So I think what I'm hearing, correct me if I'm wrong, we support the change, it's just a question of the date.
Yes, at least maybe.
Maybe we say we support the change and Al works out the date with NRT that works best. So what I think I'm hearing is that, absolutely. So I will call NRT tomorrow and see if it's doable for a February break. And if they say to me, there's going to be a cost for them, or we can't do it during that time. And again, this is them giving me this information and we'll do the January date. Is that, everyone okay with that?
Alternatively, they could train during winter break as planned and then enact it on MLK Day.
I'm gonna talk to them. So it sounds like we're not waiting till the fall. We're gonna try to get the earliest date that works for our families and it works for the NRT as well too.
Yeah, I'm curious, I know sometimes for after school program, you can only enroll at certain times. I don't know if that's true at BMS, but I didn't know if that, if any particular week, you know, waiting period could be waived for any families that might need to use after school program.
No, no waiting period.
Okay, so you could say, oh, now I need this.
And just one last thing, first John did really great work on this. He even, he's been, was very helpful with this, getting the survey out to parents, having scheduled a meeting with Bob and I and the parent group. So I appreciate that. After you guys' decisions made, this work we have to do, like notify parents, get this information out. So this will be one of the top priorities for them to find out. I'll send an email up to you guys at school committee after I talk to NRT and then we proceed, I'll meet with John and go from there.
I would just like to make a request. If we do go with that February date, the first time those kids are on the bus is February twenty-fourth, which is more than two months from now. I don't think February is a realistic time. If we're gonna compromise, then sometime in January to give people a heads up would be okay. I mean, I'm good with June, I'm good with right after vacation, but if you feel that there's more of a buffer time, I just don't think that's fair.
I don't really understand when training the bus drivers, that we really don't agree with.
Well, and I like Jessica's idea of training them during winter break and then giving a little bit of a pump. So everybody is, then everybody gets a little bit of what they want.
This is them, so I gotta talk to them.
Yeah, MLK would be ideal, I agree.
Okay. So we have that, where I feel that about George and Al.
Yes.
And just to echo, I really appreciate the data that you took hours and hours, hours, and John and you as well, setting up the survey. It was really nice to actually see what the parents, you know, were saying and feeling and see the data.
I'm sorry, Bob did a little shot, as well too, thank you for that.
Thanks, Bob.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
And I'm sorry you had to do that.
See you guys.
Al, you're still on. Okay, continue. So I wanna give a little update about vocational schools because I know that was a conversation we had at the previous school committee. I got a chance to speak with the superintendent schools, Ernie Cool. He's the superintendent of Asvet. So just a little background, because I needed to make sure I understood this as well. And most of you probably understand it more than I do. But nineteen sixty-eight, ten school districts were asked to participate in the formation of Asvet. They were all invited to come in, Berlin, one of them was to be in one of those, well, two. Three school districts, when it came time to really initiate that and go forward with this, preschool district, Beth El, and one of them was Boston at the time. So in the past, we've talked to the superintendent, the average number of students that applied was anywhere about one seventy-nine, right? So one seventy-nine, so there was room there. And so we'd have kids that there'd be opportunities for students that were outside of district, that Boston's considered be outside of district. They could apply and we'd get a pool from the larder of those students that there. Most recently, what they're, they're approximately, they're receiving anywhere from four hundred and fifty to five hundred applications now in yield. They accept three hundred. So that's just in district. So that hundred and fifty that are put on waitlist are still kids from in districts and, you know, Berlin being one of them. Boston students can apply, but after those slots are filled or are not used, then they got the opportunity for Boston kids to come. The one thing I did learn in these last couple of meetings I've had and conversations I have, that students that could apply from Boston is in their temporary, right? And there's more open than opportunities for them. I'm gonna talk to Lisa and I may have Chester, her and the guidance counselor, but there is opportunities when you're temporary. The limited opportunities though, so you might not be able to choose exactly what you want if there's openings there. Because a student freshman year says, you know what, this is not for me, I'm going back to my neighborhood school, that there are school openings. So what we've suggested, and I spoke to Mike, our chair, about this, that we're gonna get together with myself, the superintendent Cool, Mike, and this woman called Lynn Ryan, her name is Lynn Ryan, she's from Berlin. She's a representative on Asvet Valley. And so we're gonna get together to see what are some other opportunities? Just now we found out that tenth graders have a more opportunity than our ninth graders do. Because there'll be some openings there, so we need to do that. One of the other things that is available to us that I wanna make sure we're taking opportunities is, is our students have the right to go visit, right? So we're making sure that our students can go there, whether it be Berlin or Boston students, so they can go visit, take a look at that. And that's open for our eighth graders, so we need to look at that. Again, I need to have conversations with the principal of the high school and the guidance counselor as well too. So our next step is a scheduled meeting. Like I said, Lynn Ryan is the representative from Berlin, superintendent Cool, myself, and Mike, you all will be able to give back more information on that. Okay? I wanted to make sure I gave you an update about what was taking place within terms of vocational schools. So the next thing I'd like to talk to you about is what's called our academic rigor, our academic excellence, and what that looks like. I've heard loud and clear that we need to do better and that we can do better. And I believe I mentioned even in my first conversation with you about this book, The Great by Jim Collins, right? The enemy of great is being good. And we are a good district, but we can't do that, and I think we all agree, whether it be my advent team, the community, school committee, we can do that. But my question to school committee and as a whole, that we're starting to have these conversations, what do you think? What is, what is doing better need? What does that look like to each and every one of us? And I refer to it as being called academic excellence, right? What is academic excellence? And I think that's a real important question. I think we talk about wanting to do better, but what does it mean to everyone sitting in this room? Because when I look at the table of organization, I look at our parents and our students, I look at school committee, and then I look at myself and the advent team, right? And the flowchart that goes down. But I'm curious to the people that are sitting in this room, what really does academic excellence look like? What do you mean by that? Is it better end case scores? Because some people believe in that, and now this may, it's only one test. Do not base other than on the end case scores. Is it higher advanced business scores? Huge piece of that. Is it improved attendance? We've heard that a piece of us all too. Is it high enrollment numbers? Something we've talked about. Is it college and university acceptancees? Huge piece, do we have kids go to Ivy schools? Is it rigor for our students? Is it professional wording for our teachers? Or is it student retention rate? The list could go on and on. But I really need us to decide as a group, what we think, you know, academic excellence is. What are we looking for as a school committee? Because you're saying to me, we want that, but what do we think that is? What are you expecting for the last terms of that? And I'll tell you a little bit what we as administrators don't, and I'm not putting anyone on the school committee on the spot, but just something to think about. Like, why do you believe academic excellence is? Because we've done this activity in my previous district, and one had a whole different mindset on it. And it's really hard for us as administrators and the people that are helping lead this district structurally, to be looking at this direction when you really want us to look in this direction. But I want us to think about, what do you believe academic excellence should look like in Berlin, Boston, and New York? And I'll just pause for a second, see if anyone in school committee would like, I'm not putting anyone on the spot, but I am.
Just a little bit more on Al's, talking about, this is sort of the theme that we've been talking about the last few meetings. What we're talking about going into the superintendent search. We're gonna have descriptions of what we want that next person to be. So earlier this year, we talked about, we expected to have another vote on the handbook for Tonto tonight. That's going to happen next month. It's not happening tonight, we're not ready, but that's a piece of, we're gonna have that come up. Not prepared tonight, but this idea, this, this theme, I guess, you know, we heard this at the town meetings last year with the budget, focus on the special needs. And there is a lot of focus there. And then the other half of the parents stood up at town meetings and said, well, what about the other side? And we don't talk about that as much because, I don't know. So this is sort of a theme that I think is gonna be coming this year and as we look for a new superintendent. Anybody on the head?
I am. So I think that, one of the things that I've observed is that I think that, you know, we spend a lot of time, to your point, and resources on special needs and helping kids that have needs. And I think that's great, but are we spending time and resources on kids that need to be challenged? Kids that, you know, if you just let them go, they'll just do status quo, they'll be good, they'll be okay. But if they're pushed, they'll be great. And I think that we can do a better job of that district wide on identifying those kids that might be lazy or might be, you know, just kind of like hiding. Because what kid is gonna, hey, give me more work. I'd rather do work than go outside and play or play video games. But I think, you know, and I don't necessarily, I'm not saying like the teachers need to do that. I think maybe we need more resources. We need, you know, more coaches, more people that can come in and identify those kids and push them further. Because to me, you know, being great, and I'm a runner, and I love fitness and exercise, and pushing myself is even when I'm uncomfortable or tired, is how I get better. And I think we need, maybe shift our focus on that in the schools.
And a lot of this, to make this point, you guys have tried to, but a lot of this does come from that exit survey. Eighth to ninth grade.
Yeah.
We looked at, we saw the summary over the summer. We got the more details on that, but a lot of this does come from comments from that.
I went to a talk on justice, and so there's a, I correctly, the full name, but it's M A C E. And they provide education on how to do justice. So apparently Massachusetts is one of the few states that doesn't have an IEP for those that are excelling.
Gifted, yeah.
Yeah, a gifted IEP. And so interestingly, Jesse just hired someone to spearhead this within our state, which is really great. But M A C E might be something to look into for that type of, you know, instead of you make it extra work, you have them do two oh four problems and then do this more, you know, enrichment part of the lesson.
I think just a couple of things. So special education, right, there are students with IEPs, right? By law, we have to make sure or provide that. But we also gotta look at special education, sometimes it's too inspective, right? So there's kids that are special because they have that high performance that are accelerating as well. So we need to take a look at that. And I don't necessarily know that we're doing as much pushing that as well too. Again, a lot of, a lot of good ideas out there, but it's a lot of blinking lights that we really need to get our focus on. And that's something that the work that we're going to do as well too, because it needs to be done. It really does. It was, I'm dating myself, but it used to be, initially we had this called a P program, right? P E A K, and it was providing provision for academic kids, right? So this was a high performing kids that we were providing the academics in the curriculum for. So there is, are things that are relevant that we can go and visit and see. And not necessarily in the state of Massachusetts, but we were very close to the one on Rhode Island, New Hampshire, where they have these programs as well too. And that's really wanting to get that.
So I just wanted to comment, you know, I was, I was a top grades three through five. I was the, I don't know if they even do inclusion anymore, but I was the inclusion classroom, so I had kids with IEPs in my class. And a lot of them were extremely bright. They just had processing problems or things like that. But when I taught in Berlin my first year, we had Mrs. Russo, and she was an enrichment teacher, and she came in once a week. And let me tell you, every kid in that classroom lived for that day. They loved the way that she challenged their minds, she got them to think in different ways. I think enrichment is a really huge piece. And I think we got rid of that because we have more time on learning, but I think it really just gets these kids to think differently. And I was always really impressed with, with my special ed students because that's, they soared. And they're, a lot of their, you know, their classmates would see them in that way. So it's helpful for both kids, for both ends of the spectrum, and the kids in the middle too.
This group has heard me, we're not saying over and over again, apologize, you be up, right? Universal design for all, for all students can learn, right? And we're not just single out for our students with special education, but there are ways to teach that everyone's gonna learn and do well, and exceed. So it's not just getting delivered, but there's different ways to student plan, right? So that's a, that's a huge piece, and that's some of differentiated instruction we talked about, that's being very, very specific. So that's the work we really need to do. And I'm gonna just again, push back, and this is the work selling knives, that we need a strategic plan, right? So that we all know what we're looking at doing. So even when we're sitting in the budget meeting last night, someone's throwing out, oh, how about this? How about that? We shouldn't even change it financially, never mind our instruction on what our focus is for the next five years. So we're not saying we're not supporting that this year, we're putting it on the back burner, but this is what we need to be focusing our academics on and our financials on. We really need to have, and if there's anything that I'm gonna leave here as a major superintendent, is something semblance of a strategic plan in place. So the best gift that a superintendent can have, as a gift to a superintendent when I retired, is a strategic plan in place. Here it is, now I can really do the work that's been laid out there. But I don't wanna, so there's pockets of excellence going on, right? When I'm talking to Sydney and I'm talking to John and I'm talking to Lisa, there are academic things that are taking place that are excellent. But there's, it's silent though, so we have to make sure, because everyone that's coming from Berlin and Boston eventually goes to the hospital and eventually walks across that stage and graduates with a Berlin-Boston Regional School District diploma. But we're all doing some really great things, but we're all sort of growing, but we're all growing in different directions. We're all working really, really hard, but I think we could work maybe a little differently. And that's the work that we need as the advent team to say, okay, this is our plan. This is where we're going, and we understand this is what school committee wants, and this is what the community wants. So we're not just trying to like go up with blinking light, oh, that sounds good, let's go over there. So if I could just ask for a couple of minutes, I don't mean to put you on the spot, principals, but if you could share, and this is something we're gonna do every single meeting, and it goes back to Mike saying, like, we should be celebrating our successes. So what are some of the things that we're doing in our school this, this time period from September, from when we first came on board, from when I first came on board, what are we doing now to show that we're being successful in the work that we're doing? So if I can ask you, Lisa, just stop.
Yeah, sure, absolutely. So at Tonto, we're dedicated to reviewing and always looking at our programming to make sure that we're finding our program, program to ensure that we're meeting student needs. So we're excited, this year we were very excited to have reintroduced our accelerated math in grade seven with the new full, with the full-time math teacher that we have. I know that it's hugely successful and the students are now going to be able to move further in the math curriculum in high school without needing to double up in, at the high school level. And then this all. And then this also will allow us next year to be adding, or to reintroduce Algebra One at grade eight. So that, that's very exciting at the middle school level. Working with the department chairs to develop course descriptions that I've had, I've been involved with discussions about what our course offerings and what scheduling is going to look like for next year. And we have some really innovative ideas and innovative ideas about scheduling. And I have gotten proposals, which I'll present next for the January meeting, for a variety of different courses that we would like to bring forward and have approved. And this will be able to provide AP courses to sophomores. And so introducing AP Research and AP Seminar, AP Pre-Calculus, and also looking at providing or offering a coding class, Python at the high school level. Because we have three levels of coding, science, computer discovery, the science, computer science discoveries at sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. And we have computer science principles and AP computer science principles, but that's it. So what's one step we can take? And that would be a coding program, a Python program. And to, we are, I'm working with my mentor this year to explore two areas in our high school. And that's looking at potential pathways. And what does that look like in terms of, in, with our current structure? Are there ways that we can develop pathways in our school? And also developing our life skills program to reflect the highest standards in that area. And visiting programs, and Janelle and I are working on that as well. I do want to highlight that when the U.S. News and World Report came out, Tohoto was identified as number thirty, as a thirty, as thirty-three out of all Massachusetts high schools and number four in the Worcester area schools. So that, you know, it's, and that is reflective of the AP offerings and scores and the level, the types and range of courses that we offer.
So just to answer, if you're paying close attention, you're saying offering algebra at an early age for our kids is an unbelievable opportunity for our kids. Our students can then be able to follow that, that chain and be able to intercede there to Calculus B.C., which is the hottest AP course offered in the entire world, right? A student that gets a three, four, or five in that can absolutely, basically, you're right, they're taking them in the college and university as the highest AP course. But if we don't offer algebra early yet, which we're going to start doing this year, they can't fit that in the school. So that's a huge piece. Also offering AP opportunities at an earlier age for next year is the things that maintain kids, right? So when kids are applying to colleges and universities, and their resume looks really great out there, right? And now we have ways of really thinking our cover, let us look even better, right? Electronically, right? Because there's ways of doing that now. But the advanced placement is the advanced placement. It stands across the entire world, right? From Australia, everywhere. So offering that is an incentive to keep our kids here and making sure that they're going to be successful in any applied college and university. So good work on that.
I will be brief here, because I didn't know we were bragging about our U.S. News and World Report scores. I would have worn my 111th T-shirt. Beginning of the year at Berlin and Boylston, we all decided to take, I think I shared this once, a school-wide goal around independence. Because the challenge for students today, their hands are held so much and so often that they, you know, you let go of their hand, they don't know where they're coming. And one of the places we see that is in mathematics, which was the focus of PD for us this year. So all of the teachers, most of the teachers, some already have two-year plans. But the teachers who are able to adopt at this school of enhancing independence involves learning and personal behavior. What that looks like in learning, and this is especially because it is, in case you have not heard, the year of math and PD is getting kids to take ownership of the problems that they're being presented with. Everybody knows if you had kids go through upper elementary school, word problems are just death to them. They want, you know, they can do seventeen minus five, they can do fourteen times seven, but you give them a story. Bill has five marbles and Shanny has three more. How many do they have altogether? They can get lost because they don't take the time to think for themselves, what's the question here? So that's what we're working on in terms of academic excellence. You know, we're blessed in Berlin. We have this amazing parent group. They do enrichment programs all the time. So I feel comfortable in the types of enrichment things that kids can access. They're very affordable. We've made arrangements through length to fund kids who can't afford it. And there are, I would say by the end of the year, every kid's taking at least one. So I'm comfortable with our enrichment piece. I'm comfortable with the attitude that people are taking, holding kids more accountable for their own learning. And it's a lot of stuff, because we, we talk, we talk about this every year. Tohoto ready? If they're not Tohoto ready, they're going to get left behind. Those schools are, and they have to learn to work hard to be successful. So they can do algebra, for example, and do those things that we offer here.
The PTO or the link.
Link.
So impressive. Right, with that being last.
They're amazing.
The enrichment that they're offering, those students, talk about developing the right brain of a child, not just the left brain. That demographic is, was incredible.
I will point out that it took an entire group of people to do what Aiden Rosso used to do, but they are doing it.
Very impressive. Very grateful. And licensed by Usworth and Johnson. Thank you for that. Nice work. Sidney?
Of course, thank you for giving us this opportunity. You know, we know, I'm looking at some of our data, that we have some work to do at Uyghurst. And one of the things you heard me say at the beginning of the year was we're going for gold. That is that growth mindset that I would say the staff at EES has dove into, and they are there. They're buying into this, and they are jumping in, and they are working on some things. And some of the things that I want to highlight and that I'm very proud of is, you know, the data drive. And we've said that before, and I want to talk to you about what that looks like at EES this year. So we're analyzing assessments and benchmarks and state testing to identify for things that we're doing well, but more importantly, the gaps and adjusting our teaching methods to that. So during grade level meetings, during staff meetings, we are spending more time looking at the areas that we, where we come. So some of those areas that they identified were operations and algebraic thinking, fractions and decimals, geometry, for example, right angles, quadrilaterals, symmetry, word problems, and ELA, parts of speech, proper nouns. And we think about that for a minute, and we delve deeper. That's more third, fourth, and fifth of those areas. Why? We delve deeper, looking at K through two, how are we going to support that? What are we doing in grammar in K through two? Do we have resources to support that? Answer's no. What can we do to support that? What can we bring together for those grades to support? Because I don't think M-Pass, it is grade three M-Pass, or grade four M-Pass. I call it K degree, K to four, K to five. They know that. So they want to work together to support, how can we support those younger skills in math? It is the year math. But also in ELA. What are we doing to support them? They're looking at math in those areas as well. Fractions. What can we do in kindergarten for fractions to support as they get into those older grades? So it's diving into the data, looking at it, what are we doing? What do we need? How do we support that? Some examples of that, we do have a wind block this year, and this is where we're putting in that enrichment piece. And it's, it's interesting that enrichment came up. I still have it written on my whiteboard when I started last year, when I met with some of the families and the parents. That is an area they said that we did not do well in this district. What do we do on for enrichment? The wind block allows for that piece. So the wind block is what I need now. And what we do is we split up, we have three times in our schedule for most grades. It depends on the age. Kindergarten is not going to meet for thirty minutes or forty-five minutes. They might meet for twenty, three times a week. And they're working on skills that our data is showing us we need to work on. Fifth grade has been working three times a week. And we are going across the gradals. We have three fifth grade teachers. There's a high level, enrichment piece, we have a middle level, and we have a lower level that's working on those skills. Right now, they are working on, where do I have it? They are working on fractions and decimals, which we discovered was an area of weakness for us. That is an area that during our service, it comes in later. They're working on it now based on what they've assessed in the data that they're doing. They're still going to teach it later on, but they're diving into now to give them that, that skill set until they get there. They've already adjusted their groups. That was amazing. They're looking at their data, they've adjusted it, and kids have moved across those groups. So they're getting those pieces. Fourth grade's doing the same. We have new fourth grade teachers. They're going across the classrooms to do that, and they're working on those skills. Their skill set is different, measurement data. How are they focusing on that? They're changing kind of the spoken sequence a little bit. I'll be honest, we don't have that spoken sequence. It's something we'd like to work on going forward. But measurement data was a weakness. They moved it up. Concern with that is, what are we moving back and how do we fit that in? So they're moving geometry back. Be careful there. How are we fitting that into other places? Third grade noticed, and they're working on area perimeter. Off service, math resource, separated area and perimeter. As a former third grade teacher, area and perimeter go like this. Why are they separated? They asked, can we move them and teach them together? Absolutely. Let's do this and let's teach it together. We're looking at the data, and they're saying, can we teach this together? And they're teaching. So they're bringing all those things in, they're looking at our resources, they're using this in our wind block, and they're giving what the kids need. So we're getting some of that enrichment in, and we're doing it. I'm very proud of them for this because they are very open to it. They are going for the gold. And our younger grades are really looking at how we can support those older grades. And they're doing the wind block as well. One of the things that we are trying to get the specialists involved in is doing kind of that cross-curricular things. How can we support them in fractions? How can we do C or math? How can we do symmetry? I could do symmetrical snowflakes. And how can we do that? And I know that we've talked about that, doing further down in PD, how can we get that math into those areas? And you know we're working on attendance, and I have to brag a little about this, this is a team effort with everybody involved. In order to teach them, they got to be there. And we've made some progress already. So last year at this time, I sent out forty-eight letters according to our policy if you have over five days. This year, twenty-one. That's huge. So I'm proud of my team, and we're going to keep going there, and we're going to get that. Thank you for letting me share.
So there are three prime examples of excellence, right? All really great stuff. But we still don't have that overratchy, what is our goal, right? Great stuff going on at Tohoto, great stuff going on in Berlin, great stuff going on in Boston. But it's all just like this, right? So we need to have a common thread of what we're all doing, because they're all our kids, and they all eventually go off to work the way that Tohoto, what it looks like, and what our expectations are. So that's the work we have to do. We own that. We all agree, there's no one in this room saying, no, we don't need that. We know that. So that's the work that Sarah and I are doing. We're basically interviewing people that are going to come in and help us to this work and this strategic plan. And that will be the umbrella that all these other pillars will follow in the, including the budget results. And we'll give you updates on that.
Every month, yeah, every month. Every month you're going to have this on the agenda.
I would imagine some of the great parents are starting to look what they're going to be doing next year, so they know what's going on, maybe that influences them a little bit.
Yep. The last thing, and then I'll be quiet, I promise. So the last thing I see is we're changing our website in WTCR. The website that's coming out, we're initiating it first at Tohoto, and then I worked our way to Berlin-Boston. We'll be finalizing that tomorrow at our admin meeting, where we're getting professional learning, how to do evaluations better with the teachers. But we're really ready to watch right before Christmas, the new website for Tohoto. And like I said, we're very ready for what does. The website is the way that we're engaging our families, right? Not only for our parents that are here, but parents that are moving into the community and saying, hey, let me just check out this school district. And having that be active and interactive and current, you're going to see a whole difference. So I'm hoping that at January's meeting, we're going to be able to show you what it looks like and get your feedback on that. But that's a huge piece, because even myself, when I was first, you know, asked about Berlin-Boston, I went right on the website, right? And what doesn't show and what doesn't show. And that's the work, the work that I'm now, making it interactive and making it so it's tied to our social media as well too. So you'll start seeing that as well too. That's another big piece we're looking at.
Thank you. Any quick final questions? Yes.
So there was a three-year plan that is in the drive, and I think not all of those goals were addressed in that three years, so that might be a.
Is it district improvement?
Yes.
Title?
Yes. So I knew, so I just go three-year plan and it popped up. And then there was also portrait of a graduate that was done with a huge group of parents, staff, and students and former students too. So that is somewhere to.
I would, I would say that our strategic plan is here, and then you look at the school improvement plans as a pillar, district improvement plan. I really have to lay with a portrait of a graduate now.
I think it's like, that's up here somewhere.
Yeah. But I really do believe, and then there's equity audits as well, there's all those pieces that fit as pillars that need there. But we really need to, like, what are we doing as a district? And what direction do we want to move in? And that should be what the school committee holds onto as well too, to say, this is what you said we were going to do, and hold our, sort of, our feet in the fire.
Yeah. The portrait of a graduate kind of speaks to that direction.
Okay. I honestly, I haven't had a chance to really read it yet and look at it, but that will probably be one of the things I'm working on next.
Anybody else? Thank you. Next up is Aaron.
I'm reading. So, howdy, everyone. So I'll just dive into it. You have a memo in the shared file regarding the 2025 budget. Desi is breathing down her neck a little bit to have a voted 2025 budget. So in crunching the numbers, we do believe that our revenues can support the budget figure of twenty-four million, seven hundred ninety-three thousand, six hundred eighty-eight dollars, broken into the assessments to Berlin and Boylston that were voted at town meetings. So we would humbly request that the school committee vote that. We will then share that information with Desi and you forward it to school committee.
So Desi's asking us, well, yes, asking us, but they're asking us to vote on this.
Yes, to basically affirm what we believe the budget to be.
Right. Agreed, spirit of Desi is over for us. Yeah, they're not as forgiving as they were maybe a month ago. Okay, so this is on the agenda right here as a vote is needed, so you're saying we need to.
I'm saying we should, we should probably vote it as an affirmation vote.
All right, so I'll just read your recommendation there as a motion. May I have a motion, please, that the Berlin-Boston Regional School Committee vote to affirm fiscal 2025 school district budget, totally twenty-four million, seven hundred ninety-three thousand, six eighty-eight, developing an assessment of eight million, one forty-two thousand, one hundred and ninety-four dollars, sixty-seven cents to the town of Berlin, thirteen million, eighty-nine thousand, nine hundred eighty-six dollars to the town of Boylston.
So moved.
Megan?
Same.
Lori? Would anyone like to discuss this?
Just to confirm, these numbers are verbally agreed upon, but not presented at the Berlin meeting by accident by Berlin. And they had passed a higher number, but this is a number that we agreed upon in the meeting before that town meeting. And thus Berlin's assessment, Boylston's assessment is lower, which is allowing the law about a leave of vote.
Correct. Both towns have committed to these assessments. They're both paying these assessments as we speak. So, you know, we're confident that towns, you know, support this. We've talked to Ibedipo, April and Kristen. They're prepared to support these assessments.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against this budget? All right, I'm favorable. That motion passes. Thank you very much, Aaron. I know accounting work is...
Great fun. We'll start working on that and make things right in this year's budget. With that said, you do have a copy of a presentation we shared with the town of Boylston last night. That seemed to go pretty well. We will have a similar presentation for Berlin. We're making sure I've got the pronunciation right. So we will present that tomorrow night in town. And once both of those are done, I will combine them. I don't want, didn't want to present information to Boylston that Berlin wouldn't have. So Berlin's side of the equation will be presented tomorrow and then we'll have a combined presentation for both towns. There. Okay. And then I am just going to share a few things going on in the department. We've made a lot of progress and I feel pretty good about it. So just a bullet list of items to fire away and just make you aware of. So we have posted all fiscal 24 payroll. I think we shared with you that there were summer pays that had not been posted yet and had to be teased out a bit. And those were the teacher's summer pays. So we have booked those teacher's summer pays and those are in our accounting system. All FY24 accounts payable is complete. So there may be something out there we don't know about, but everything we know about is paid. So we're doing our best there. I think we're in good shape. With those, with those two items done, we are now in the formal process of closing fiscal 24. There's going to be some reconciling of May and June and that's going to be a little work to do. I've done some reconciling. We're going to be working with Cynthia Harrington in her office to kind of fully close that out. There will be some receivables to book, things that came in and didn't get booked, but for the most part. With that said, that means we can begin work on the end of year report. So ala the Desi breathing down our throats, our necks, we've received emails from Desi for our end of year report. I've worked with Jay Sullivan of Desi and we will be submitting that report by January 3rd. So I'll be working on that over the next few weeks and probably over the holidays. Once we fully close fiscal 24, we will begin the E and D calculation. That's something you can't do until you have all of your accounts sort of settled and done. The end of year report, we can begin a little bit in advance, pre-closing. We have installed, configured and trained on the receivables module in our fiscal software. I think I shared with you that up until now, it seems the district has been booking all of their receivables through journal entries, which is one way of doing it. It's not the most efficient or effective way of doing it. I've been booking some things using journal entries, but now that we have the receivable software, it'll make that a lot more efficient as we go. All of our fiscal 25 bills are current with the sole exception of Amazon, which usually takes a little more reconciling. And I think if Amazon wakes an extra couple of days, they'll be okay. So we have paid fully Amazon through September and we're moving into October to make sure that they're paid in full. All fiscal 25 payroll to date will be posted by next week. I'm working with our payroll coordinator to make sure that all of our payroll files... So we have paid everyone, I think, as we know. But we do need to book those into our system. So we have a methodology to do that. We will make sure that is on our system. All FY25 grant accounts and budgets have been entered. So I think when I arrived, we had some situations where a number of our grant accounts, the actual account numbers and then the budgets were never entered in the system. That lessens people to having to book things in, I guess the best word for it is hidey holes. So things were booked in account numbers that weren't necessarily correct account numbers. So in that process, in addition, today completed a number of adjusting entries to correct some of those expenditures that were made in improper accounts. And those should all be accurate. We'll be double checking with folks. I want to make sure I'm not 100%, but I think we're there. I think you should, given all of that, you should expect to see a fiscal 25 general fund budget report at the January 14th meeting. I think that was a conversation that I had with the chair, Mike. And I felt like that was doable. So we are committing to getting you guys an actual financial report, which I don't understand, which I think is fair. A couple of things that are pending. We have a number of grant draws and closing reports that need to be done. That's sort of next on my list. And then we will work on properly booking our fiscal 25 revenue. So those are things we can operate on without doing immediately. The money is in the bank, so when we receive money, it goes into the bank. But we need it recorded properly in our financial system. And that's something that wasn't happening. Additionally, grant draws bring in some of that revenue. We aren't hugely grant dependent, but we really should be doing those grant draws on a regular basis, typically quarterly or monthly. So that is about it. I feel pretty good about where we are. I really want to say that Patty, our payroll coordinator, and Arnold, our new accounts payable coordinator, have been doing a fantastic job and I couldn't be doing any of this without. So thank you.
You really have a really good financial office right now. I'm still very fortunate right now. Hidey hole, was that worth it?
It's the same bit. Come on. It's a technical term. And just one last thing, Nicole, do you have exactly captured the vote and the numbers and all that just going to be definitely popular education? So all of that?
Do you have it written? Yeah.
I read it.
In the memo, it's in the drive.
So we have to share that with them to make sure they know.
Sure. Yep. We'll get that.
Thanks, Aaron. I mean, I have my own PTSD with thousands of accounting transaction lines back in the day. So I understand exactly what you're looking at and I don't envy you at all.
Thank you.
But thank you for coming and sorting through all of us.
It is what it is. We're actually having a good time with it. As funny as it sounds, I mean, you know, every time something new comes up, we have a good laugh and, you know, I laugh to keep from crying. There's nothing, there's nothing we can do. Lighting our hair on fire and running around screaming doesn't help anything. I'd rather just roll up my sleeves.
It's sodium iodine. It's sodium iodine. It's a good match.
We're going to get there.
Yep.
All right, thanks, Aaron.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions, Aaron? All right. Next, technology update, I think we're going to skip. Definitely hold off until, I'm sure we could. I'm looking forward to the new website. All right, so next, a little bit of business for us, subcommittee appointments. Jess, I did hear from you. So we had policy negotiations, budget safety facilities and student success. Policy negotiations are currently in the middle so far right now. Obviously negotiations starting up. Budget safety facilities, there used to be Megan and Julie. George is clearly no longer here. We have an election for that. And so Beth, you had mentioned you being okay on that committee. Is that something you're interested in?
I don't think I mentioned that, but Julie might have mentioned that.
Hey, you know what? I'm not going to ask you to do anything I don't want to do.
Oh, no. I, personally, I'm interested in policy. I understand if it's not a good time to do that, I can defer that to later. If it's a better fit for budget, that's fine. I just wanted to say as far as negotiations goes, I hit the chartering the course class this past weekend and there was someone there that was new to their committee. They were on a seven-person committee. They had a three-person negotiating team and he was the alternate. I didn't know if that was something that we would ever be interested in, that maybe if someone was interested in joining the negotiation to keep things moving, if there was ever a conflict or a conflict that liked timing, a personality, or maybe someone that are students that jump in or kick out, is that something that...
Yeah, and alternate actually is, I think we had four.
That makes us a quorum if four of us were there.
We did not have an alternate when Laurie and I did it and it actually was a problem because I got COVID and then it threw everything off. So you can have, you can have three.
If there's three of us, we do have an alternate, right?
You can have three in, but you can't have four.
Yeah, because four is a quorum.
Yeah, you can have three.
You have two right now, right?
There's two on negotiations.
Right.
So a third alternate to sit on the base would be okay.
Right, that's what, that was my point.
Okay, Jay.
Yeah.
It's not a quorum. Now, Jess, you are also interested in negotiations. I think Jess just wants to hear it. Sorry.
No, I've been going to suggest Jess.
So if we're going to do an alternate, I think that's a good idea. Jess would be able to do that. Okay. Sorry, Beth.
No, that was my suggestion. That's why I brought it up.
The budget committee, subcommittee, I think it would be good to have someone. Lisa, unless you're on technology and student success, if you would do that, or what do you think?
I would love to be on the budget subcommittee and I'm not even sure about the student success and technology subcommittee anyway. Like it's kind of unclear what the purpose is and we really barely ever met and I don't know. I kind of thought that we should rethink that one.
That's fair. Yep. Jess, you're the chair of that. What do you think?
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of a morus, right? So like student success and technology kind of, kind of sometimes talks about policies, but we're not the policy subcommittee, right? And so, you know, we both went to the conference and so that was actually great. So we could talk about that and then kind of shrink everything down. We never really were able, I think with all the budget drama in this frame, we were never even had a meeting to hash out a mission statement for that particular committee. So.
Mike, can I ask that we keep that committee because I think we're going to, this is work that I'm working on with the technology. I'm looking to have a five-year technology plan. And instead of it all being presented to school committee all the time, I'd like to be working through the subcommittee of that. We don't have a five-year or even a three-year plan. And that was one of the things that came up when we were in the meeting last night, like what's your plan for computers? Like how are you rolling those over? How many times are you buying computer computers? What's the lifespan? What's insurance? So all of that is a lot that needs to be done and my goal is to get that done and right after the holidays, start working on that. And I don't want to do it with all school committees, right? I'd like to keep that technology committee in place to vet it through them.
Yeah, that's mine.
So, but if Lisa wants to come on, she's Berlin. She could come on budget and then you can let Beth do the student success and technology.
Everybody do it.
Of Jess? So then Jess will be on two. You're on two.
I understand what you're saying.
You're on two. We're both only on one, but it's budget. So we'll have to be monthly.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's...
Maybe the town should get a direction.
But I think nailing down like a mission statement.
And again, I just don't want to vet it. The purpose of the policy meeting is right, so I can vet it through them, smaller group, and then they can bring it to the whole school committee. And there's a lot of work we're going to do in the next moments, as you'll see shortly, that needs to get done with that.
Yeah, I mean, at that point, too, like we've addressed like cell phone policies and that's kind of, you know, obviously it's a policy, but there's a lot of research and stuff to be, I guess, presented to the policy subcommittee.
So how about that? So we'll do that. We started with a bit more direction, a bit more activity. If there is something that comes up across us with policy, one policy and one success committee member can be, you know, you got something like that. And I think the optics sort of looked really good that we're having this because both towns have asked us, me about like, what are we doing with computers? What are we doing with their computers? They're on their capital every year. So I see for us to dissolve that, I don't think is a good question. We'll restart that, get more attention, more activity there. Lisa on budget with Megan for Berlin.
She had two other things. She had an idea and then I think, so obviously this year we'll have subcommittee of superintendent search as well, which would be Laurie, me and Jess. Jess, that's a lot for you. Are you...
I would want to chair the technology.
You might be in the right direction.
Do you want to do it?
I mean, it's...
It feels...
Yeah.
All right.
And then next year we'll have to add a superintendent eval, which is a whole other...
Yeah.
I thought we were going to do that this year. I apologize when I said about before, Mike, I was thinking about the three of us being on the negotiations and I don't know why I keep putting, I'm sorry, on the superintendent. I keep putting that together with negotiations. So that's why I thought we already had.
It's like I'm an actor.
Right, no, but in my head, I was thinking there were three of us already on it. We added another one via quorum. So that's what I confused.
All right. So technologies, it says Beth with Jess, budget, Megan with Lisa, and policy negotiations will stay up with Laurie and...
But Jess will vote?
And Jess will be the alternate negotiation.
And Lisa had an idea.
Yes.
I was thinking we should have a communications subcommittee where we have, where we can share more information, social media, you know, important things that are coming up, you know, things we're considering, highlight successes, you know, just kind of build a lot more goodwill and excitement in the community.
Would that work with technology and you and Ben?
I think once you see what the website's looking like, it's like, I'm amazed on the work that goes behind the scenes and developing the website that's so interactive that if we could just wait for the next month to show you what that looked like, I think that might tie really nicely that all of you could as school committee members, pre-providing information to that and uploading it. So and then okay, district website as well, too. So I think if we could just give you a month, I think we'll be able to show you what it's going to look like and that will help out with communication tremendously.
All right, let's, can we put communications on the next agenda? Communications on the phone again. All right. Thank you, Nicole. So Mike, sorry, who's on negotiations, the final committee for negotiations? Me and Lori with Jess as the alternate. So Jess will be in communications.
Also for negotiations, something you guys can decide, but it came up last night. They wanted to know, usually we have a municipal rep and they take turns. So Boylston did it three years ago.
I said, Berlin's turn.
They wanted to make sure that they were not going to get pulled into that.
And that was that?
Yeah, it was April, so it would be Kristen.
They decide, they both come to the ground rules, right?
Yes, and then they mutually decide.
And then they have to decide and then they kind of set forth like, so just like...
And we will be, we've got a list of dates to respond to that. Here's, yep. Okay, so we'll get, you'll get in touch with Kristen, of course?
Absolutely.
All right, absolutely. Yep, thank you. Yeah. I'm switching to my phone because my battery, I'm starting.
We don't have to vote. You just apply.
I don't have to vote. I have to vote if you're either.
Yeah, it's just one question.
All right, next item on the list, DVR is the attorney consideration. So some of it has come up. Looking at different ways to report new direction financially, save money. We've had the idea of possibly reaching out to a new attorney or taking, signing on a new attorney for the district. Currently it's Merrick O'Connell. So that has come up. That's an item, a business item, if we want to do that, vote. So I know we received a proposal. Has anyone had a chance to look at that? Have you anything to say about that?
Our leadership is significant in savings.
Yeah, financially, yeah. Good deal financially.
I also appreciated that it was a small firm. Just thinking back to the other educational attorney that we used, who was wonderful, but he had a lot, he had a lot. And knowing that they're small is also helpful.
All right. I can also say this is a lot firm that I worked with in Worcester, I worked with in Hindenoverham. Aaron and I worked with there as well, too, and did all of our negotiations. And currently also doing multiple negotiations, which is very helpful to us as we've got the negotiations process as well. All right. So that'll come up on the business items to vote to accept that if you'd like. Subcommittee updates next. Anybody suggest, do you have an update?
Yeah. Yeah, so when my new chair, she handed over or offered for me to be on the Boylston master plan implementation thing.
Thank you.
Yes, and so there is a very lengthy document you can review at your leisure, but I kind of summed up about 112 items that I thought were relevant that, so our job is to say, what in that master plan can we check off, can we own, can we do? And so I had emailed about a month back, but I'll forward it again to the admin team as well to see what things that perhaps I've already done or even there's a possible project that high school students could do to create a QR code and a tour of the town, so I can forward that to the admin team to see if they have any thoughts on the matter, so I can give an update from our committee. And then, so last year we both went down to the conference and so we had an opportunity to have a meeting. We haven't had a meeting since then at our conference, but there were some really great talks about budgets and, you know, coming two years ago, you know, what's happening and so it was, it's really nice to get grounded in some of the topics and, you know, knowing what a call center is and that we should be receiving quarterly report projections for the budget and new job descriptions are changed or added, we should be approving them. Also, not in my tenure here, operating protocol calls are something I learned about that we should be discussing within the committee, creating together and periodically revising and then also signing us numbers and also the superintendent and our subvelves based on those operating protocols and then also being posted on our website. So that is something I wasn't aware of and so I thought that was of interest to us.
Megan, do you have any other questions?
So we've not had a meeting, but I believe we are finally going to do it next week now that we have our committee. So we'll try to touch base before break and with Lisa and Erin and Al, if you want.
Where is superintendent search?
Yeah, so we just had those two companies present to us. I'm going to set up a meeting where we can discuss and present. Do you want it at the next meeting, you said, for us to present what our recommendation or...
We need to get started on this, yeah.
Okay, we can do that.
I think at our next meeting we should decide whether we're gonna go with those two.
Yep.
We're gonna do it on our own, we're gonna, we'll take input from your subcommittee.
Wonderful, great.
Can I just ask, the subcommittee means we need to have those meetings, do you want?
It's a lot.
Okay, good.
Your office. We'll be munching on your snacks.
Tell you what, those men are everywhere else.
You are an excellent host.
Policy subcommittee update, might as well just get into business items because that's all we have there, policies. So if we can take our business items first, if we can do the policies first, so read first reads. Student absence excuses and attendance, JH and JE. They're marked in there, one is a rule and the other is to just update some language that had been updated last year, a couple of small changes in there we can take a look at. And this will give us one comprehensive attendance policy and it's being a big deal in elementary school this year, right, come to school so you can actually learn, no vacations during school days, right? So that's first read and then the student dress code is in there for first read. The administration made some changes to that as well, so we've got that to look at, we'll vote on those in January. The service animals in school update, this is on there for a vote because it's a very small change, but an important one. Al, do you want to say anything about that?
Sure, so we, myself and Mike and Laurie, sorry, I was going, I'm sorry. Had a chance to have a meeting, we got a policy and we met with the chief of police as well as the comfort dog that they are bringing in to the community. So one of the things that, you know, John and I have spoken about, right, so where does that fit in? Whether we're having pets, allowing pets in school or whether having service animals in schools. So it did fit in the spot that we eventually all agreed that it does sort of fit in that service animals in school. And just so you know, what a comfort dog is different than a service animal, right? So a comfort dog wouldn't be, if there was something that took place, if there was a tragedy, if there was a situation that took place. This dog would come in and work with our students, work with our staff, work with our faculty and we had an opportunity, Laurie, Mike and myself had an opportunity to meet, the dog, it's incredible, right? It just really is a comforting animal and this is something that's happened throughout, not only the entire state, but also happening throughout the country, right, in light of everything going on. But in fairness to what's happening in Berlin, we want to quantify policies and that was not anywhere in the policy of admin. So we're asking on IMG A service animals in school, that I'm adding to the very last paragraph where it says the superintendent schools are, their designated, shall be responsible for the development procedures to accommodate the students use of assistance animal in district facilities and on school transportation vehicles. And then I'm adding to that, this also, this is also include comfort dogs to be available in our schools. And that's what I'm asking, I think, to vote on tonight if we could, because it's such a minimal change. But there is a little bit of sense of urgency, I'm working with that dogs and that community. And even last night, on Monday night, I'm sorry, Berlin had their town meeting, right? And they were able to bring the dog in there, so they just want to make sure we have that in place, whether it's a school event, an office event, they can bring that dog. Yeah, three hours, eighty something people, it was silent, I'm marking all the...
Wow.
Changes, it truly is.
Very cute picture of the two interacting.
Fire.
The fire and the police, yes, yes.
Okay, so could I please have a motion to approve policy IMG A service animals in school as presented?
I moved. Second.
Lisa?
It was Lauren.
Laurie, okay. Anyone like to discuss?
My only concern is that a lot of people say, Eric, we have comfort dogs, so I don't know if you need some verbiage to say approved comfort dogs. So like, I know it's like a company that will bring in or like a fire or the police, so I just feel like just saying comfort dogs leaves it wide open for someone to say, I think my doctor knows that comfort dog.
It says the superintendent, yeah, the paragraph says the superintendent will develop procedures, so that would be covered.
And just for clarity, Laurie and Mike, can I ask a question? Like, they can't just show up, right? They can't just show up at school and say, I know the comfort dog. They need to have the prearranged through myself, by the principals, but also if there was a reason to bring the comfort dog in, we're not just gonna interrupt instruction, we're not just gonna have them walking up the non-homes, but this way we have this in place in case it's necessary.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Again? All right, I'm in favor as well, so that will last, thank you very much, thank you. All right, last item is the approval of, so we can discuss it, may I have a motion to approve the change in BBRSD attorney to go with the law offices of Shawshank Street, DC? Jess?
Second.
Lisa? All right, would anyone like to discuss that?
You're here.
Just grabbing the ability to call and some pick up the phone and give us answers when we need that and the time in the end is crucial for us to do our work, do our work, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against?
Me.
Megan is against, I am in favor as well, so that one passes, I will call, can't deny tomorrow. And there are some things we're gonna talk about next and we're wrapping up, but we need to work on that in time. All right, may I have a, sorry.
To the first read, I just, I just had a clarification.
Yeah, okay.
So you said one's getting deleted and one's getting edited, which...
JE is being deleted.
JE is being deleted?
JH. JE is the first one. It's just redundant, JE we passed last year, it was just an oversight that we didn't have them, we didn't hope to remove JH. JE, MASC suggested we replace JH with JE.
And I think I owe mistake, I think JH was voted on even before I came here. I think you guys voted on it previous meeting sometime in spring, that JH was out of there completely. So I gotta go back to London, Cole?
It was September, Lisa, it was September tenth.
September tenth.
Oh, and I apologize, it was what I said, I won't have it anymore.
So, if, do you mind if I clear?
Right.
So on Tuesday, September tenth, there was a revised budget. It appears as though the business item identifies approval up to remove policy JH when speaking with Nicole, it looked as though it was tabled. So that's where I think the confusion was.
Yes, 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 why was it something happened?
Because we were going to revise it.
That's right, that's right.
So, that's there, okay. So that will coincide in January with the handover.
So JE is one we're keeping.
Yes.
And so the highlighted edits are the changes to be made to that policy. I was curious, under section two, the V, it says, Dr. Dentist Appointment and Card Letter Note From Physician/Dentist is gonna be deleted. So I was curious, and I know under section seven, there's excuse the note from Dr. Dentist must be given within fourteen days, but I'm curious why that is being deleted for exceptions or absences.
So...
Yes.
So, because we're getting a lot of blanket notes. So what we want is very specific notes for specific things. So there are three parental excusals per, in, at Tohonto, it's per semester, so six per year. So if you so choose to use it on that, if there's an extended absence for a specific medical condition, we have, you know, waiver of procedures in place for extended period of time. If it's a doctor's appointment, it should be considered within one of the parental excusals.
Okay, so then I guess for illnesses, so I mean, one of my children had a fever for five days due to the microplasm pneumonia and then my second kid got it and had fever for four days.
Right, so you have to get a doctor's note.
So that still falls under that? As long as I give it within fourteen days? I just, I just was confused why it was getting deleted. I understand, like, I, you know, as a provider, I, oh, my kid was absent these ten days here and these fifteen days here for the right excuse, not like, well, you weren't seen. So I understand that reasoning.
Right.
But I guess for illnesses that are more than a day, like, for, I just, I don't know, maybe I'm not understanding it. So, so no doctor's notes are now accepted except for extended illnesses?
So, so a doctor's or dentist appointment, so it's not illness? It's a doctor or dentist appointment, so that is the exception, so it's an appointment.
Okay, you come to the school at nine, needs at ten thirty for an appointment, or doesn't...
What, no, so, right, it's, that is, it's like they come in eight thirty, or they come in, they're dismissed at nine and...
They're absent.
They're absent for the rest of the day. It's trying to curtail that type of, those types of situations, so it's for appointments.
Okay, so hypothetically, if someone has raises, that's a monthly or every six weeks.
Well, hopefully they would come back to school.
Hundred and ten percent, but I don't know how that covers a person for only, you know, being left for forty-five minutes versus... I don't see how that...
A normal typical day in the, if you have an appointment, is to make that class period, you are present for that class period. That's what we're saying.
Right, so absences not counted, so it's like a full day absence. So we don't, we don't want full day absence for a doctor's or dentist appointment.
Amen.
So that, that's really the issue.
But I guess I'm not seeing how that's delineated, I just totally didn't get that by reading this policy. I don't know, that might need to be like, I don't know, but, like, it's really hard to get an appointment after school hours for a dentist or a rubber hand or...
But hopefully, like, they come, they don't take most of the day off for that appointment.
They hope most parents, but I don't see how that delineates in this policy.
There'd be like language put in that says, like, the school prioritizes...
So let me ask, so let's do first reads, right, and then when we have comments and coming back, we'll actually have these over and over again because they're working on that with us. So at the next school committee, we can, we can talk about that as well too.
Like, I wholly support that and, you know, even as a provider, I'm like, okay, I'll give you one hour to go back to school. So I wholly support that, I just don't, I don't read it that way.
So don't forget that there is, under six, a waiver of the policy will be heard by the principal or assistant principal. So there are exceptions that can be made.
Lisa, can I ask a question? How long do the students need to be in school for it to be considered a full day?
It has to be, it has to be, it has to be half the day.
So, okay, but it used to be like eleven oh nine, so I don't know how many periods that's equivalent to, it used to be like five out of seven.
But that gives you at least a couple hours for raises.
Right, five out of seven.
So perhaps worded like no more than two periods can be missed for an appointment or something.
So we gotta raise the policy, right, so it's gotta come south of the...
At whole district. See, that's, that I think is the piece. We can have specific things in the handbook that delineate more specific for schools, but just as Mr. Gannon said, this is an attendance policy in general for the district.
Spell that out, it's a Tohonto handbook, I'd say.
Right, yeah, you can't, because it doesn't...
I mean, in two sections, there's already an elementary school and middle high school. So under the one, class attendance, it splits out elementary school, middle school, and then under five, it does as well. So I just maybe ask that be looked at, you know, as, again, a working parent, that's, I'm listening, I just...
We also want me, so that parents just also just don't make appointments at ten oh five, right, or eleven thirty, right? Because that's when, you know, we're trying to have parents be a little bit mindful of, like, trying to get a little appointment, saying, oh, what else is trying to get, either after school or before school or jurisdictions? But we also don't want to be just like a complete like pass to say, yeah, you got ten o five, but I'll go at that time.
A hundred percent, but I challenge that with, like, my pediatrician doesn't do physicals in the afternoon, they only do them in the morning.
And I said, if not the appointments after school, it's preserved or... But you would bring your child back to the appointment, I think the argument that...
A hundred percent, so I just...
And they don't, yeah, I think the argument that Lisa's making is people were kind of abusing that.
I'm going for me because I have an offer done, so I'll let you out, come in.
I was not making up that, I was sorry.
I was curtailing that, but it just, the verbiage that's left does not...
So you can still take your kid out for an appointment, you just have to bring them back and it's excused.
Well, that, that time...
This policy doesn't say that, I don't know.
Yeah, that's confusing and this is not just Tohonto, it's district wide, right?
Why don't you take it back to your...
Yep.
We can talk about it later.
All right.
And two more seconds, so the very last thing, number eight, it says, parents are to call or they use the dismissal management system at that elementary level. In this day and age, we cannot email the night before so I don't have to wake up, you know, like, you know. And we do it via SMS, but not at Tohonto. So I just, you know, if the verbiage is email, like, three different people, like the principal, the nurse and the whatever, you know, I just...
We're trying to channel it to either using that dismissal management. We all know that sometimes, myself included, I had to look at email Wednesday, so sometimes that doesn't there, so always happen depending what takes place. So we're trying to really use a system across the country.
And we use a dismissal at Tohonto as well.
Use a dismissal, I want that just...
So we're gonna, we're gonna look at that, who's on the technology subcommittee, I would. So that'll be one of the first things that we take a look at as well, because we have the ability, we just don't do it yet.
I'm just reading this, this, I mean, I am guilty of this, like, we've gone away, I've forgotten to put it in the thing, eight thirty comes and goes, I don't answer my phone, they're gonna call the chief of police?
Not anymore.
No, not anymore, that's the old one. Oh, all right, it'll be a new one.
The board chief of police said, what the heck?
I'll be like, oh, it's hurry, I'm...
That wasn't it, yes.
This is tricky to fix.
We'll get that up there.
Yeah, we could, I'm sorry to drag that further, I have several commentaries on the dress code policy.
All right, feel free.
So I think that private purse is not a great, I don't think that the verbiage is going to suffice. I think that's gonna leave the district open to, I don't know, a liability of what constitutes that and then argument back and forth.
What would you suggest?
I think you have to spell it out and I went to Nishova's policy, clothing that are real nipples genitalia and buttocks. They literally spell it out and then you say, I think you need to spell it out, but I also want to raise your attention that if you're going to spell it out, that that applies to male students as well. What was pointed out to me by a teacher in another district several years ago was that you have boys cutting the sleeves off their shirt, that would be a dress code violation. Trap shirt, those door uniforms, all need the standards, are you gonna make all the boys wear shirts to the uniforms, like?
So let's be really clear, this is not just for girls, but it's for girls and boys that we don't... But I don't disagree with all the product paths, I would ask, you know, MASC and Tracey and all, like, give us some other areas, you know, that other districts that are using it or some input you might want to give us in terms of that, because it's an issue and we're seeing it work and work.
I totally get it, I have a sixteen-year-old girl, I'm just telling you that I think that you're, that you might find yourself in a position where the boys basketball team is practicing in their practice jerseys, the low, like, that's, and we're giving them to them. Do some of our uniforms go against this policy? We need to look at those.
Does this apply to sports uniform or just for the class?
I would hope that we're giving them to them. No, because they wear their uniforms to school during the day, is what she's saying, like...
Like, basketball, you have to dress up, right? Early's used to.
I mean, if we're issuing the uniforms that don't meet standards for our policy...
Do you mind if I ask Tracey to chime in a little, like, she's chopping over there, they give us all the raising? I'm not chopping, sorry.
I'm not chopping, sorry. I see you smiling, and they're not even chopping, sorry, I apologize. Yes, have at it.
So, I mean, our recommendation obviously is that the policy as opposed to the procedure, the policy should, should not actually get super specific. Because it does very quickly devolve into that kind of deliberation for a school meeting. You absolutely need to make sure that it's gender neutral. And to your point, yes, it is generally standard that, you know, students often will wear their uniforms on game days and then is the outfit that you told them that they had to wear in violation of the code that you've also proposed. So, I mean, I've seen, honestly, what we've seen is more districts moving towards, and this may or may not be where you're at, current dress codes that much more are, you need to be wearing something on top, you need to be wearing something on bottom, you need to be wearing shoes. And really getting into heights and inches and lengths and everything else, very quickly devolve into things that are discriminatory in terms of things like body type as well. And we certainly have seen reflections of that. It most often is female students will complain of it, but then you also get into discriminatory kinds of things in terms of race of class, so.
So.
Did I just complicate your?
You did.
We had that policy that was very bland and neutral, but then there's been a lot of things hanging out at Tohonto.
So we, we really should, Jessica said exactly.
I swear.
She did say that, it's got to move right along. But we're seeing inappropriate dress for both males and females, right? And it's unacceptable. And we need to be able to say, that's what policy is, and that's what we're, we're working with M A S C, far as to say, here's a policy that says that you can't have things at both, you can't hang it out, whatever, you gotta have, you gotta have the appropriate clothing. And so we got to decide what that, what that looks like for our male and female students.
I would just, I would suggest if everyone wants to look at the, I can send it to you, you can look it up, the Nishova policy, pages thirty-five and thirty-six. They break it down, I think it might more meet what you're looking for. And then at the end, it does have a line that says, with our core values in mind, all students should be able to dress comfortably for school and engage in learning without fear of body shaming or being singled out in front of peers. Reasons for conflict and inconsistent, inequitable discipline should be minimized whenever possible. Teachers should be allowed to focus on teaching without additional burden of dress code enforcement. Teachers with specific student concerns should forward them to assistant principal.
Is this a yearbook or is this a policy? So I don't want to.
This is the Nishova policy. That was like the last line of it.
Or is it here? Is it policy?
Their handbook, I'm sorry, their handbook.
Handbook, that's a handbook.
So that's more specific.
So this, this was created by the administrative team, correct?
That's correct.
Is there, what on here do people have issue with, I think is probably the question.
Saying private parts is.
That's okay, no, I agree with that. But I heard something more ripped clothing.
I'm just saying that, like, I think that.
Nipples, if you change.
If you're going to sit there and say that that's, that's what we're looking, not looking for, just be aware that you might, that you need to enforce it evenly and that you might be capturing a lot more of a population that's not.
I didn't make that connection.
So you're saying the basketball team, the boys basketball team.
Not their, they show, their, the practice jerseys.
Turn of practice.
Right.
Turn of practice.
Those, the practice jerseys, like, the uniforms have like the smaller armholes, but the practice jerseys are long and big.
So they're not.
No, I think it's a style of jersey, that is.
And I've also heard some from other families that, you know, girls flip hockey uniforms, right? The skirts are very, you know, shotting.
Or the team tucking their shorts in.
We allow on in school as well, too.
Yeah, so I mean, I understand, I'm just, you know, I keep calling.
So I'll put this, all your suggestions, you know, and take care. We will go back, we do have a student in the room, does this student want to chime in?
On, on anything on the dress code?
Yeah.
Not particularly that I can think of. I mean, I, I kind of genuinely agree with the idea of, like, kind of, I think, I think a broader, from what I can hear, the difference between the policy and the handbook, a broader policy and a much more specific handbook of laying things out individually, this, this, that, and then a more broader policy, but mostly I don't have any additional comment.
These kids go to law school. All right, so, if you may, one more comment. And we'll talk a bit about that and about the details.
So, can I have a basket clarifying question? So this is a policy, so the, so the student dress code policy that's currently in the policy manual for B B R S D is a, a copy of what M A S C recommended in August of twenty twenty-two. And the school committee voted in December of twenty twenty-two to accept that policy. So this policy that's being presented aligns a little bit more with the handbook, so is a little more strict than what the current policy is. So I just want to clarify, so I, I guess I get confused as to when we're asked for recommendations, because this is a school committee policy, like, where, it's just a clarifying question, like, where do you want us to provide information and how far does that information? Because I think that's what happened with the handbook, because I presented a handbook that I thought was complete, but as a committee, you had questions. And so you have questions, so, but it's a school committee policy. Do you know what I mean? So I'm just, I need to understand what my responsibility is when the questions are asked, because it's a policy. Do you understand?
I do understand exactly what you're saying.
Okay.
So, I mean, this policy didn't work, the current one, the G J I C A, during, during, right? I mean, is that what I'm saying?
So the idea for policy is if, I'll give you an example, we sir, our rich, ready, say, inappropriate clothing, you need to change your, we need to put something on it. And the parent, whatever happens, whatever we ended up, the parent comes to me and says, what are you doing about this? I'm going to bring my attorney, or I'm going to do whatever. I need to be able to say, as a school committee and as overseeing the school district, here's the policy that says I'm allowed to do this. That's the one thing that drives us, right? And that's one of the major responsibilities a school committee has, right? Hiring, meeting, budget and policy.
So I'm saying, the one we passed before was, was not working, logistically.
And that's why.
So now there's feedback. So I guess, I think we're supportive of what you gave us in terms of the new one, I think, but you were saying the private parts is what you have.
That was the concern.
But we, we got to live with this, right? So whatever policy you guys create for us, we got to live with it day to day. So we're telling people what makes our lives so we can operate in a day to day basis, but whatever policy you guys decide is, is more protection for us. So that's why we, that's why we did this as a first read, it's on both. Yep.
Yeah.
And so here we are.
The student shows up with a very.
Yeah, so we're gonna, we're gonna stop the conversation. You're gonna provide comments to Al. He'll figure it out when we're back. All right. Any new comments on the, it was one, other policy, and we'll remove any comments on that? All right, so then we're going to move into our executive session now, and we will not return to open session after this. May I have a motion, please, to enter executive session, Minnesota Massachusetts, General Law, section twenty-eight, verse three, discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining of litigation against the rest of the B R S D. If you don't believe, you may have a judgment of respect and bargaining position, public body and chair, so the players.